Calling this meeting to order. Agenda item number two, invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Garcia.
Let's bar heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all your blessings today. We ask you that you join us in this meeting, that you help us make the right decisions, Lord. We come to you today, and we ask also for our cancer survivors, and we ask that you continue healing and touch all cancer patients as well. May you surround them with peace and hope. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
.................................................................................... Regular agenda item number three, proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We have Ms. Tina Lewis with us here today, and I don't know if we have any other members from the Advisory Board, from the Mission Possible Advisory Board, but the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas National Feral Cat Day, we would like to spread the word and promote the education of National Feral Cat Day in our community. Whereas October 16th, 2018, is National Feral Cat Day, a day dedicated to educating communities about the importance of spaying and neutering feral cats and return as a humane method of care for feral cats, which are outdoor cats. According to ASPCA, more than 70,000 feral cats exist. Whereas trap neuter return improves the lives of cats and stabilizes cat population. Trap neuter return is recognized throughout the United States and other countries as a humane and responsible way to care for feral cats. Feral cats can live healthy lives in their outdoor homes. Feral cats are just as healthy as pet cats with equally low rates of disease. They have the same lifespan, too. Whereas most community cats are not socialized to people, they are not adoptable, they don't belong indoors, and are typically wary of humans. However, as members of the domestic cat species, just like pet cats, they are protected under state anti-cruelty laws. Whereas we would inform the community by distributing educational material at Spur Memorial Library, Mission Chamber of Commerce, City Hall, the Mission Food Bank, Mission Parks and Recreation, and the Mission Boys and Girls Club. Whereas we also recognize the efforts of Mission Possible, RGV Low-Cost Spray Neuter Clinic, Recycled Rover, Forgotten Friends, Cinderella Pet Rescue, and Yaki Animal Rescue in their efforts in promoting spaying and neutering. Now therefore be proclaimed, we the City Council of the City of Mission make it known, dedicated, and set aside October 16th, 2018, as National Feral Cat Day in Mission. Proclaimed on this the eighth day of October, 2018.
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. And does it now open up for further discussion by any of the council persons? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Ms. Tina? Oh, we have Ms. Yvonne Perez here also.
Do we have anybody from Yaki or Cinderella Rescue?
You all want to say a few words?
Did you want to say a few words?
No? Okay.
Wow. Okay.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Perez. Who's going to receive it?
Out here's someone else.
Are you going to receive it or receive it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Regular agenda item number four, proclamation.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, Mayor Council, good afternoon. I know we've got several members here with us from the Catholic Daughters of the Americas, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Catholic Daughters of the Americas Court, St. Rose of Lima, Number 827, is one of the oldest courts in the United States. The court was organized in 1923 and received its charter on September 9th, 1923, in Mission, Texas. Whereas the Catholic Daughters of the Americas Court, St. Rose of Lima, 827, has a citywide membership of women in good standing in their respective churches. Their motto, unity and charity, binds members united in charitable work throughout our community and also to serve their respective parishes and liturgical and catechical ministries. Whereas the Spirit of the Catholic Daughters of the Americas Court, St. Rose of Lima, 827, takes many of its members to serve on various civic committees and volunteer with organizations that provide shelter to the homeless, to the terminally ill, to the hungry, and to areas ravaged by disaster. Whereas on October 20th of 2018, at 10:00 a.m., the Catholic Daughters of the Americas Court, St. Rose of Lima, 827, will be celebrating their 95th anniversary with a mass celebrated by Bishop Mario Alberto Abilis at St. Paul's Catholic Church in Mission, Texas. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby congratulate the Catholic Daughters of the Americas Court, St. Rose of Lima, 827, on their 95th anniversary and wish them continued success. Proclaimed on this the eighth day of October, 2018.
I move to approve. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read? I'll open it for any discussion by any of the council persons. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You all want to say a few words before we come?
We want to thank the city for allowing us to be present here and for having the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You want to step forward for a quick picture?
[laughing]
Are you going to be the one?
Thank you for your service.
Do you want to?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Adele, you want to come over here?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Regular meeting agenda item number five. Mr. Garcia.
Actually, we have Paola here from the Mission Regional Hospital to do a presentation on the Mission Pink Walk that they're going to be conducting this month.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Paola Lopez. I'm the new marketing development, business development manager at Mission Regional Medical Center, and I am here to formally invite you to our event, the Mission Pink 5K Walk. That's going to be on Saturday, October 20th, at the Mission Regional Medical Center. We would love to have your presence there to welcome the community. As you know, last year we didn't do it, but this year we're ready to, to go again. So we would love to have you there, you know, with Mission Regional Medical Center. I wrote you a little something, you know, so you just remember to go there on the October 20th. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paola. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commerce, Mr. Nava, or the designee from the chamber.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, City Manager. I'm here to report on the recent events with the Mission Chamber and the upcoming events. Recently, on September 25th, we held a ribbon cutting for Heavenly Healthcare, and on October 4th, we partnered with the city for the ribbon cutting of the Leo Peña Placita Park. Last Friday, we held our 2018 Annual Banquet and Chamber Choice Awards. We thank you all for your attendance. We hope you had a wonderful time at the event as well, and we had wonderful support from the community with over 250 attendees to that event. Upcoming events, October 24th, the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce and RG Vision Magazine will host a mixer benefiting American Cancer Society. On October 26th, a lunch and learn workshop taught by South Texas College. The topic will be personality, cultural, and generational differences in the workplace. It will be held from 12 to 2:00 p.m. at the Mission Chamber of Commerce. It is a free event and open to the public, with lunch provided by Raising Canes. On October 30th, we'll be hosting a ribbon cutting at Taco Vicente. That's located right across from the Mission Event Center at 205 North Sherry Road, Suite A, in Mission. The event will be from 5:30 to 6:30 with a ribbon cutting ceremony at 6:00 p.m. And on October 31st, we will host a ribbon cutting at Mission Bell Trade Winds RV Park, located at 1711 East U.S. Business Highway 83 in Mission. The event will be from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and the ceremony at 2:30 p.m. Thank you so much. We hope to see you all at the events.
Thank you, ma'am. Regular agenda item number seven, departmental reports. Are there any questions from the council on any of the departmental reports presented in writing?
Move for approval is presented.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second. I would like to open it for any of the city councils if they have any individual questions on any of the departmental reports before voting. Any questions? No questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Regular meeting agenda item number eight, citizens' participation. I would come before us and address us by your name and address, please. Do you have the list?
Good evening, Dr. Mayor Okonah and City Manager and City Council. You asked us to be here again tonight. This is the original National Lightout Committee from 1996. We were honored, for the first time on Thursday night after 23 years. So I do thank J.A.M. from the Progress Times for writing an awesome article back about a month ago, and City Councilwoman Jessica Ortega for hearing my plies, and Dr. Armando Okonah. I had, as a city, the past 23 years, and we would be honored in almost every term, I was told, "You're not on the agenda, Edma. You're not on the agenda." So I'm glad I'm here today because this committee worked very hard to put this event together. It was the second-largest event in Mission that I know of, next to the Citrus Fiesta. And I take great pride because I grew up here in Mission and I love my community. And I grew up on the south side of Mission by Esalen Park. I had an idea. I asked my boss, and we went with it. And if you were there Thursday night or you were at the report, it's a huge event. I did get in trouble with my boss, and I had to give a two-week notice at time in 1996, so while we were having a night out, I wasn't going to have a job the following week because I gave too much to the event. I went on to work at another agency, and once again, I was reprimanded time and time again from my community. But thank goodness I didn't give a two-week notice and went on to work somewhere else, and that's when I passed on to Martine Garcia in 2001. And I'm just mentioning it because it takes sacrifice. When you care about your community, you stand out, so it's right. So I do thank Adela Ortega, my sister, Hilda Flores, who put up with me year after year, excuse me, the Amancio family, Andrea Garcia, and Nora Deles. Thank you so much, and thank you, City of Mission.
I would like for you all to come up, so we could take a picture for the record, you know.
Thank you.
Historical.
And thank you, Mission.
Thank you.
[applause]
This one, please. Okay, everybody, did you pick?
Thank you.
Just to thank you again, thank you.
If there's anybody that will pick up their certificate, it is an attachment. Thank you.
I'm going to come up a second time, during the National Lightout, because Dr. Okonah asked me to be here on behalf of the committee. If it's allowed, I'm here as a resident. May I speak? First, I reserve my Dr. Okonah. Is it okay?
You have three minutes.
Yes.
Give your name and address.
Edma Flores-Lopez, and I proudly live here in Mission, 1201 Carroll. As we all know, a situation is around us here in Mission, and I know in my heart that it wouldn't be if we had term limits. If we had term limits, we wouldn't be in the situation we're in right now, and we all know about the situation on Friday. We're taxpayers, we're registered voters, we walk the streets, we buy here in Mission, we have a voice. Let's don't become too territorial. When we become territorial, we dumb down everyone else, even everyone here in this room. We were educated here in Mission Schools, or Sharonon Schools, City of Mission Schools. Does that mean that none of us can serve, that none of us have a voice? We learned in kindergarten to take turns. Let's take turns. If you're a good, solid leader, grow someone to be next. Lead them, guide them, because that's what we in Mission do. Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to approach Mayor and Council under citizens' participation? Please give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Let me find the microphone first.
We'll give you the necessary time, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Time, ma'am, don't get hurt.
Yes, my name is Macarena Peña. Very proud to be from Mission, and good evening, and thank you for giving me this opportunity, Major and City Council and Commissioners. I am here representing the National Federation of the Blind. We are the largest and oldest organization of blind people in the United States, and here locally in the valley. We have been established since 2010. We have 50 active members, and it's an invitation. Very proud that this October, we celebrate White cane Day, which is what is freedom and productivity and success for blind people. So this year, we were very happy, very blessed to choose my hometown of Mission to have the White cane Walk. So this event is going to be on October 27th. It's a Saturday from 12 till 3:00, and we invite all of you to come and join us. We will be inviting the community to put a blindfold on and to work with a cane, and not to scare you, but we want to show you whether with the proper training, with the proper tools and equipment, a person who is blind can be successful, get an education, have employment, and we want to address the Mission community. Unfortunately, because of diabetes and other conditions, a lot of people, adults, young adults, are losing their sight. So this White cane Day, it's also going to be a resource Fiesta specifically for the blind and visually impaired. We are going to have over 30 different resources specifically for the blind. We're having the Texas Guide Dog School. They're coming to take applications for individuals who are wanting to have a guide dog. We're going to be providing applications for free canes. We are also going to be providing the opportunity to get a sleigh and a stylus. Those are the tools that blind people use to ride bull, and we're going to have games, again inviting the community to put a blindfold on and take a challenge, and understand, again, that with time, a blind person can learn to do everything. So I hope all of you can attend, take the challenge with us, be a part of this wonderful movement that we're trying to educate the community, but we also want to reach out through those who are blind and visually impaired, but are just sitting at home doing nothing. So I hope you all can make it, and I'm going to pass out some flyers, so you all can remember to attend, and of course, there will be food, free, okay? So thank you. Any questions?
What work is it in need?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's going, I'm too excited. It's going to be at the Mission Rec Center, right here. So we're hoping to have the walk from here to, from the City Hall to the Rec Center. And so we're going to have, Lions Club is going to be doing vision screenings, we're going to have hearing screenings through the UT. A lot of the UT disability is going to be here educating the parents about what is available for blind students, because unfortunately, they don't know, and so they think, "Oh, high school is it." No, we want to encourage them. The Texas Work Force Commission is going to be here, too, also talking about job opportunities. So we're going to have some technology, we're going to have everything that a blind person might need to become independent and successful. Questions?
Thank you.
No, very good, thank you.
Thank you, and I hope to see you all there, okay?
We're going to step down, ma'am, so we can take a picture with you and the gentleman here, next to you. Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
See you.
Okay. I can do it. Talk to me, one second, the picture.
Yes.
12 to 3.
27.
27. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carrillo. Nice meeting you, Armando Okonah.
Yes, sir.
We talked on the phone, but nice meeting.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, I saw you at the Brothers Vialto.
Oh, yes, that's true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wants to address the mayor and council under citizens' participation? Please come up to the... State your name and your address, and you have three minutes, ma'am.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jada Hernandez, and I'm from Indigo, Texas. I do not own a mission, but I am a member of the House. And government and our cities in the valley concerns us. Since the election is voted, we are asking for the mayor to step down and allow the pro team to take over until the city holds the election. Thank you.
Anybody else wants to address the citizens of, under citizens' participations? Take your name and your address, and...
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and Council. My name is Norma Lita Cavazos. I live in 2301 North Bryant Road, and I'm asking for the mayor to please continue until we have a final appeal. And at the end of that, I think that you are earnest and honest, and you've been wonderful so far. Please disregard the elves.
Anybody else wants to address the mayor and council under citizens' participation?
A little nervous, so help me here.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Andrea Gasta Gonzalez. I lived on the south side of McAllen for, all my kids graduated here. Martine can prove it. He grew up with my son Rudy Gonzalez. When we first started this campaign with Beto, 20-something years ago, I asked him for drainage in the south side of McAllen. How many of y'all can say it's done? No, we don't have drainage up to this day. I asked him to fix the roads, they're still the same roads. I own the property at 222 Holland Avenue. I do not vote in McAllen, I mean in Mission. I vote in Mission, in McAllen, but I also own, like I said, I own property here, and I do love Mission. I live in McAllen, but my heart is in Mission, you guys. I come to the football games, I, you know, everything. My grandkids are here, and I want to get information about the blind because my grandson, Jacob, is blind. But Dr. Okonah, please stay with us, help us. We really need you here. We need your honesty, we need your love for Mission to stay with us. Please bear with us and stay in your position. We were done with Beto, and if I have to come back and live here, I will come back and live here.
Anybody else, citizens' participation? You want to address the mayor and council on any issue that's not on the agenda? Again, citizens' participation on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any other citizens' participation on any item other than the ones that are on the agenda? No other citizens' participation? Then I'll move into a regular agenda item 1.0, which is a public hearing, and we have one, a call for 1.1, planning and zoning recommendation, agenda item number A, rezoning, and Mr. Osavell, this is a public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of all of Lot 1, Bodine Subdivision, Number 1. The property is owned R1, single-family residential, and the intent is to rezonate to C3 general business. The applicant is Dr. Norma Alcavazos, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September 26th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of East Griffin Parkway and Bryan Road. The tract has 20 feet of frontage to Griffin Parkway and 270 feet of frontage to Bryan Road. Griffin Parkway is a five-lane major thoroughfare, and Bryan Road is designed as a major thoroughfare. The surrounding zones include R1A, large lot, single-family, to the north, and to the east. To the west, we have R1, single-family residential. And to the south, on the south side of FM 495, we do have C1, which is office building. The existing land uses are residential to the north and to the west, vacant residential to the east, and to the south, we have medical offices. The future land use map, which is a guide that we use in determining what the zonings should be, does reflect that this should be a lower-density residential, an LDA. This is an exhibit showing the future land use map. What you haven't read is general commercial, but the particular site in question here today is lower-density residential. Staff has received several calls about, from the abetting neighbors, and the major complaint has been centered around traffic. No, we don't have drainage up to this day. I asked him to fix the roads, they're still the same roads. I own the property at two-twenty-two Holland Avenue. I do not vote in McAllen, I mean in Mission. I vote in Mission, in McAllen, but I also own, like I said, I own property here. And I do love Mission. I live in McAllen, but my heart is in Mission, you guys. I come to the football games, I, you know, everything. My grandkids are here. And I want to get information about the blind, because my grandson Jacob is blind. But Dr. O'Canna, please stay with us, help us. We really need you here, we need your honesty, we need your love for Mission to stay with us. Please bear with us and stay in your position. We were done with Beto, and if I have to come back and live here, I will come back and live here.
Anybody else, citizens' participation, you want to address the mayor and council on any issue that's not on the agenda? Again, citizens' participation on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any other citizens' participation on any item other than the ones on the agenda? No other citizens' participation? Then I'll move into a regular agenda, item one point oh, which is a public hearing. And we have one, a call for one point one, planning and zoning recommendation, agenda item number A, rezoning. And Mr. Osavero, this is a public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item one point one A is a public hearing for rezoning of all of Lot One, Bodine Subdivision Number One. The property is owned R-one, single-family residential, and the intent is to rezone it to C-three general business. The applicant is Dr. Norma Alcavazos. And if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of East Griffin Parkway and Bryan Road. The tract has twenty feet of frontage to Griffin Parkway and two hundred and seventy feet of frontage to Bryan Road. Griffin Parkway is a five-lane major thoroughfare, and Bryan Road is designed as a major thoroughfare. The surrounding zones include R-one A, large lot, single-family, to the north and to the east. To the west, we have R-one, single-family residential. And to the south, on the south side of FM four ninety-five, we do have C-one, which is office building. The existing land uses are residential to the north and to the west, vacant residential to the east. And to the south, we have medical offices. The future land use map, which is a guide that we use in determining what the zonings should be, does reflect that this should be a lower-density residential, an LDA. This is an exhibit showing the future land use map. What you haven't read is general commercial, but the particular site in question here today is lower-density residential. Staff has received several calls about, from the abetting neighbors, and the major complaint has been centered around traffic. Let the additional traffic would be if this property were to go C-three, general commercial. In talking to the residents, they would support a rezoning when Bryan Road gets widened, but not at this time. There was public opposition during the P and Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended denial of the rezoning. The staff is recommending denial of C-three, and as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item one point one A is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Osavero. I open it for the public to give us some input in for or against. Please come to the podium and identify yourself and the name and address and state your position for or against the rezoning. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and City Manager and Council. I appreciate you letting me speak. My name is Leslie Eichelberger. I live catty-cornered behind the property in question at twenty-three ten Moore Gebo Trail. And our driveway is actually right behind that property, and it's actually city-owned. So I'm here to speak against allowing this to become C-three, simply because already it is very much of a traffic congestion, especially during the morning hours, like between six-thirty and nine o'clock, and in the evening between three-thirty and seven. So it's almost impossible to get out of our driveway, or even out of the main entrance. If we were to relocate our driveway in the front, we still couldn't, it still wouldn't make any difference, because it's already so congested, just with the normal flow of traffic. Adding a C-three right there would just be a disaster for that whole entire neighborhood. We already have difficulty getting in and out of there in a timely fashion. So that is a concern that we have. We also have a concern about our safety if it were to become something that was open twenty-four hours a day. You know, we're not really designed for that kind of thing over there. It's a really quiet residential neighborhood with citrus groves close by, and it feels more rural to me than city. Anyway, I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else, sir, come, state your name and address and your, in favor or against your position, sir?
I'm Pat McCarty. We live at ten-twenty-one East Griffin Parkway, immediately adjacent to this property that they are trying to get rezoned. There's no doubt in my mind that a rezoning to C-three would increase significantly the price that she could get for it, to the detriment of us and the other neighbors that are around there. It would have a serious impact. You talk about traffic, but it would have a serious impact on the worth of our properties. And you all have done a good job in developing this whole area. It's a very nice area, and you're going to put a service station right in the middle of it, or maybe an automobile repair shop, or something of that nature. And think of even the safety concerns. There are children that are here, there are grandchildren. I just think it is a terrible thing for the city to do. And I am really very much against it. Do you all have any questions about it?
Of me? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. For or against, please come up to the podium, please, and...
Mayor and City Council, my name is Ruben Arcata. Personally, live right now at twenty-three oh one North Bryant. Can I borrow your point? Okay. So directly to answer her question, the neighbor behind catty-corner, she said, right there in that corner, there's, that is actually an alley, a service alley. It's not a driveway, but they use it as a personal driveway. And it's four or five people that use it as a personal driveway. It's an alley, first of all. Number one, there's not going to be any more or any less traffic, whether you put a C-one or C-two. The traffic that runs east and west and north and south completely makes no difference whether you wind the road or not, you still have the same one, it's just broken up. The reason that you have the traffic back up is because the city has not opened it to further make that, if you go further down, the sidewalk, it's actually ten, fifteen feet already expanded, except that portion between that U of a driveway and all the way to four ninety-five. So why would you want to do that if you didn't want to have this open up before? So again, the alley is a service physically. Number two, sir, if you were to sell your property, you would definitely benefit from going commercial, because I know if you don't sell it commercial, your kids or whoever hurts at your property will sell it commercial for that same benefit, correct? So whether we have it commercially, yes, today or tomorrow, and as you saw the future land maps, it shows C-three all the way around except this one. Why is this one set aside? Why isn't it looked at the same? If we look at alcohol, there's alcohol right there in Loretto's that's sold and drank there. You're not even a thousand feet away. Okay? So look at it in an open mind. We have growth and there's future here in Mission. Whether it's a C-three or residential, you're going to hold us back from, you know, expanding? That's the whole thing. That's where commercialism is. That's why it's expanded to the east and to the west. Why would you leave something like that alone? For personal reasons, because I don't want a driveway? We've even offered to, you know, put a ten-foot wall as a noise barrier. That appeases a P and Z. We never got a call from the P and Z to have that adjusted. Thank you.
My name is Patricia Amidis. I live at twenty-one oh five Magnolia Street. I just wanted to say that I, in terms of traffic, there's a medical plaza there already, so it generates a lot of traffic. And I think for the betterment of the city in terms of business and generating revenue and bringing people coming to actually purchase and create jobs, I think it's beneficial for everyone there. And a main convenience may be someone who lives in the back, in an alley, but there is a lot of traffic. It will make no difference, it'll just be better for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, in the back, you wanted to address the council and the mayor. Go ahead, ma'am. State your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm Yolanda Barrera McCarty. I live at ten-twenty-one East Griffin Parkway. My husband has said most of what I was going to say, I was just going to add that I've been at that property, it's my home, for forty years. I've seen a lot of changes come in and have accepted them, but I do have big concerns. We put in that driveway ourselves when we built a carport in the back. And I'm concerned that there will be delivery trucks that might block that driveway, and there's, you know, several of us who use that driveway. I'm also concerned, as Ms. Eichelberger said, that the possibility that crime could come into the area. Also, you know, papers already, you know, cups and stuff end up in our yard already. So there might be more of that. Might my grandchildren come? And it does concern me that the traffic is going to be so much worse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, once again. Dr. Norma Cavazos Salas, the daughter of Jose Roberto and Dora Cavazos, who lived in ten-ten Holland, Mission, Texas, and that are now deceased. However, I have eight siblings who are productive citizens just like myself, being born and raised there. I've lived in that property. I don't know if my daughter's here, but she wasn't able to walk yet when I moved in twenty-two years ago. I did come to the council about fifteen years ago, asking for it to be zoned. And at that time, Mission wasn't ready. So that's fine, I understood. I'm here today, though, twenty years later. As you can see, the zoning for twenty years from now, three corners are being allowed to be zoned, except for mine. So this is a very, very busy area. I think that everybody has conceded to that and agrees. I've had my actual fence run into three times, all hours of the night, and my actual mailboxes that are made out of block have been completely run over and have had to put them up again. And so there's no doubt that there's two issues going on here, that there's a lot of traffic, and that's separate from zoning my actual home as commercial, that's one. So the widening of Mission, of Bryan Road, needs to be reconsidered. I know that you guys are doing tailor, and I know that this has been entertained for some time, but an actual count would be a benefit, because I, Dr. Marina was at the Planning and Zoning Committee, he agrees. This is probably the second or third most busiest street in all of Mission. So again, that's one issue. So the zoning is one idea. I couldn't even beg to argue the other point, that making it commercial and having an inlet and outlet might even ease up on some of that traffic. And we are willing to, I've been saying this over and over again, I'm willing to work with the city, I'll sit down with the city and talk to them about the, my real estate broker is here, Mr. Garza, and he has plenty of numbers and everything to go over, but again, let's not, let's separate the issues. One is that there's a real problem with traffic on Bryan Road, particularly in the mornings. You know, that line will go up past the canal. So getting in and out of the alley, with all due respect, neighbor, I agree with you, it's very difficult. It's very difficult for me, my daughter, and my boyfriend to get out through there. We'll have to go out through Bryan Road, I mean, four ninety-five sometimes. So, and there's been plenty of accidents to prove that. Okay, issue number two, the, I know that there were some concerns regarding liquor being sold. Well, Loretto, as Mr. Arcata pointed out, is not even a half a block away, and they sell liquor, Mr. Martinez, they sell liquor there. And so this stripe set is a block away, so that's really close proximity. So the liquor argument must be left back, because that's not an argument. Furthermore, there's eleven oh one Griffin Parkway.
Just a reminder, we do have a three-minute rule unless the council wishes to extend that.
Is that okay, council?
Unless, ma'am.
I've got one more, one more big issue.
Go ahead. Can you show a hand, a right hand, to see if you want to extend her three minutes and...
To extend?
To extend her three minutes?
Go ahead.
Your three minutes are...
Okay, I'll try to wrap it up quick. So the other one is that eleven oh one Griffin Parkway to the right of me, about four homes down, most recently was purchased, but it had great difficulty clearing through the bank as a residential, because it was already zoned commercial. So that's to the right of me, and all to the front and left of me are commercial. So I know, I know it's really difficult to accept change, and that's the way our future's going. So I face directly Griffin Parkway, I'm on the corner, and so there's no way, but I think it would be, again, discrimination not to allow my corner to be zoned that way. And again, I'm open, I'm willing to sit down and talk to the council regarding what level, but I would like a C-three, and I would be willing to, you know, look for the future, to do something, something nice like Starbucks. I don't have anybody right now, but I think that that would be in order. So please keep your minds open. And again, I respect my neighbors and I love my neighbors, but I think that this is inevitable, and this is the corner, this is not back there. When I moved in, there was cows in my backyard. I would sit down, drink my coffee, see the cows in the pasture. Now I've got wonderful back residential neighbors, so we just got to keep going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Doc. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against, please come to the mic and state your position and name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners and staff. My name is Richard A. Garcia. I'm a real estate broker, based in Edinburgh, representing Dr. Norma Cavazos. And I'm here just to share a few ideas and a few things with you all regarding the property. Dr. Cavazos alluded to change. You know, change is inevitable. Nobody likes change, including myself. But the fact is, life changes, things change. When Dr. Cavazos first purchased the property back in ninety-five, Mission was a sleepy town, just like a lot of the Valley cities were. And as you see, and it's evident by driving and looking at the valley, things have changed immensely in the last twenty-two to twenty-three years. Speaking of change, I'm an old guy, so I'm not very tech savvy. So what I did, I did it the old-fashioned way, like I did in high school. I did a little poster board, okay? That's the old-fashioned way. And you guys probably don't know that, but that's how I grew up, doing stuff. So what I did, I just drew a little graph with some different things in here that I think are very pertinent to what we're discussing today. The first has to do with taxable values. The taxable values, and this information comes from the Elgo County Appraisal District's records. In nineteen ninety-five, the taxable value for the city of Mission was six hundred and eighty-four million dollars at the time. Today, fast forward twenty-three years later, it's four point nine billion dollars. And congratulations to the city of Mission. That's fantastic. That's a huge place. What that means is that there's businesses, there's homes, there's houses up and down the freeway, et cetera, up and down the neighborhoods. So the Valley is changing immensely. And speaking of freeway, when I was coming to the meeting here, drove through the freeway a little bit, and looked at a lot of the stuff that's along the highway. There's a lot of small roads that intersect on the freeway, including Glasscock, Stewart, et cetera, et cetera. Many of those roads are not very wide, but the major traffic flow is on the expressway, like so on four ninety-five. Whatever businesses are going to come in are going to face four ninety-five. And while I feel for the residents, things are changing on a rapidly basis. Just down the street on Stewart Road, there's a C store already that sells gasoline, and they do sell alcohol. They don't consume it on-site, but they do. There's also another one on Glasscock, both at the southeast corner. I think those are important things to remember, because Brian will be that way someday, whether it's Dr. Cavazos or somebody else, things will be changing in that area. That's one. The other quick little graph that I have here has to do with population. What the population was in Mission in ninety-five, when Dr. Cavazos first moved in, the population was thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and some. Today, it's eighty-four thousand. Again, the growth. And the last one basically has to do with traffic counts, but we've already gone through that stuff. The last thing I want to bring up is the future land use. And if I could get that slide up there, thank you. So we see red on three corners, except the subject corner. Don't know why, but in my opinion, as a real estate broker for over forty years, I see no difference in any one of those corners. They should all be commercial. Why are we being penalized by that particular one not in the future land use? Maybe that was an oversight by previous staff, I don't know. But we would just like for you all to seriously consider rezoning C-three. Whatever happens, obviously, they have to come to the city to get a building permit anyway, whether it be a CVS, whether it be a Starbucks, whether it be a C store, et cetera. So we just respectfully request that you rezone this property, C-three. And I'm here to answer any questions, if anybody should have any. If not, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anybody that wants to state their for or against, state your name and address, please, and state your position.
My name is Marcela Redondo. I reside at sixteen oh five Sherri Lee Drive, which is right off of four ninety-five and Stewart. I am also Dr. Norma Cavazos's CPA, and I have been advising her for years to get it zoned commercial, because, you know, she no longer has use for the house as a house, her kids are grown, and the house is too big for her. So, you know, the plan is for her to sell. However, she will have severe problems selling the house in that corner as a residence. No one wants to deal with the traffic in that corner. And as she brought up, that is a separate issue that maybe needs to be considered, that Bryan Road needs to be expanded. But, you know, zone C-three, it's also more taxes for the city. And as she says, you know, it's time for change. She needs to have, the city needs to have growth, and she needs to not be discriminated against her on that corner when the other three corners are zoned commercial. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. For or against, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Cynthia Cavazos Gonzalez. I'm a property owner at ten-ten Holland, Mission, Texas. I am also a native of Mission and very proud to be from here. I think the visual, I am in support of having this area zoned commercial, not just for the mere reason that this is my sister, but because I am also a property owner. Just looking at the visual itself, looking to see, it makes no sense with regard to not zoning a commercial, when you have three other properties that are right next to it, there's no... There's no clear reason why not to, other than to discriminate against someone in this way. That's one. Two, you can see that the, the problem with traffic, you can see that as a bad thing or you can see it as a good thing. Griffin Parkway is one of the main arteries between Mission and McAllen. You have a lot of traffic going through there. That's why people have set up there and that's a good thing for Mission. It's a part of growth. It's a part of having more opportunities for individuals. So, having this property, a commercial property, is of interest for, for all of us as taxpayers of the city of Mission. And we must look forward and not look back as to what we had before. It's time for growth for Mission, so I really do support it, not just because she's my sister, but because I am for Mission and I want further growth for Mission, whatever that may be. And you will have very much to say as to what kind of business should be there because they're going to come up in front of this board to talk about opportunities. So, let's look forward. Let's zone this commercial property, please.
Again, this is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning request? Anybody against or in favor of the rezoning again? I have to do it three times to.
She wants to come back.
She wants to come back.
Legal okay?
Hold on, ma'am. Hold on, ma'am.
Legal okay for the same person to come in?
If the chairman recognizes her, Mayor.
I will recognize you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. Again, my name is Leslie Eichelberger and I live at 2310 Worgiebo Trail. And I think I can speak for my neighbors as well, those who couldn't be here because they're still working, who live in our subdivision. We do have a road, real concho that we can get out. Again, it's so busy that the neighbors who live within that confine also have difficulty getting in and out. But I don't think that anybody would be opposed if it were to be a property rezoned as C1 for office use because that's what the other properties are zoned for. And that would not engage as much traffic as, say, a McDonald's or a Stripes or something of that nature. Those kinds of businesses, I'm sure you've driven past them and seen that there's traffic backed up on the streets sometimes when it's a busy time after, after a game or late at night, nobody wants a cook or dinnertime. So, I think that if it, it would depend on what type of commercial, and I don't think we'd be opposed to C1, but C3 is a whole different ballgame. And I, I still remain opposed to that and I think it would really harm the residents in that neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request for zoning, please come up to the podium and.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gabriela Salas and I reside at 2301 North Bryan Road and I am for the rezoning. And I think it's time that Mission needs change. Look at the other cities around us like McAllen, they're growing so much and I think Mission is kind of staying in the past and we need to push forward. So, I'm for the rezoning.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Ramiro Garza and I'm also here to speak for this property being rezoned. Just to address a couple of things that have been mentioned. This zoning request, just for the zoning itself, whatever business may come in still has to come before the city. So, you still have the ability to look and, and I don't say regularly, but have a say-so in what goes in there. The type of business that goes in there without having a site plan or anything in place is very difficult at this stage to have the property owner consider to do anything other than just change in the zoning and bring the appropriate use. The reason it's being requested to be changed in zoning is because of the location. I know it's already been mentioned, but needs to be reiterated again. Just on 495 alone, there's about 7 million vehicles per year, okay? For the, I mean, that's a, a number, as you can imagine, that makes 495 a key commercial corridor. So, that's the reason the property owner said before you, Dr. Calasos, this will allow for the property to be utilized, or I should say maximize the use of it for the best use possible, given the location and the characteristics that it has for commercial use. Now, if it's change in zoning, Dr. Calasos, the property owner does, is prepared to meet all the city requirements that come into play in making sure that business operates in this location. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning?
Good evening, Mayor. My name's Charlie Quintanilla and I speak behalf of Dr. Calasos that I am in favor of rezoning. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quintanilla. This is a public hearing. If you're in favor or against, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Christopher Mencia, 21 Anne Marie. I'm for the zoning for Dr. Norma Calasos.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning?
Hello, Mayor, Commissioner, City Managers. My name is Armand Anderson. I do estate in McAllen, but I do have a lot of businesses that are conducted here in the city of Mission. And for me, I am in favor of the rezoning of that area. It's inevitable. It's going to happen. The traffic that flows through there, that's, that's a different problem. As the other people have stated, this is an area that's going to be rezoned eventually. It's impossible to live there and to be able to work that area as a residential area as it is right now due to the traffic. And it's just something that's going to happen. So, we ask that the council, mayor, city manager, look at this and, you know, like they said, you know, you all have the control as to what business is going to come in there. So, please, we ask that you review this and take the proper decision and the one that should be done. Thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. This is a public hearing. If you're in favor or against this rezoning, please come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Ivan Mendosa. I reside in Westlake, but I've been working in Mission for the past 11 or 12 years with Dr. Calasos. I pass through 495 and Bryan almost every day for lunch. Burger King is on Conway, so that's my favorite. So, yeah, the traffic is, does get pretty bad, but that's a pretty good place to, to put a commercial or make a commercial so you can put some other business. As, as everybody can tell, there's three businesses already next to there, which is a pharmacy. A lot of people go past there. And I mean, I'm for the, the commercial zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. In favor or against the rezoning, please come before the podium. This is a public hearing in favor or against the rezoning. This is a public hearing in favor or against the rezoning.
May I ask a last question?
If you, you want to come identify yourself for the record and, and ask the question. This is a public hearing.
Eric Sanchez. I live in Edinburgh, but I also work here in Mission. And like Ivan said, drive down this way to come get lunch practically daily. Now, if the argument being made, you know, is traffic, type of business, the lot, the slide that has the, the red zones, so what is the lot to the right? What is that zoned as?
C. It's still zoned neighborhood commercial. If you go back to the first slide, Virgil, the light blue, the light blue is kind of like the same as what you have to the north. That's neighborhood commercial. It's still residential. While it could change to commercial, they haven't applied for a rezoning, so it's still zoned neighborhood commercial.
I see.
I mean, I'm sorry, it's still zoned large lot, single family.
Okay. And the other types, if I understood the neighbors correctly, now their argument is not to rezone entirely, but the type of zoning. And my understanding is depending on C1, 2, or 3 depends on the type of business that's allowed to enter that property.
That's correct, sir.
So, if the concern is, again, what type of business, because as has been addressed by many people, traffic is going to be traffic. It's already there. It's already an issue. That doesn't change with businesses. That changes with, you know, road construction and widening. So, I mean, if they're just so worried about the type of business that could be opened up in their neighborhood, again, that's a whole other, you know, bag of worms. That's, they have to come to you again and whoever wants to then build there needs to come over here and ask for permission first. So, I mean, I, I think in good conscience, it could be zoned commercially and then doing, you know, the, the city council work that you do, make sure that it's something that's, you know, appropriate for a neighborhood because there will still be neighbors in that area. But if everything else in that area is already commercial, it's only going to grow, my bet. So, definitely for the zoning.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Martin. I live at 3013 Copper Avenue. I drive down 495 and Bryan every day. It's a very, very busy area and I'm in favor for the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? Please come up to the podium. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? If you could approach the podium. This is a public hearing. All those in favor or against, please approach the podium. There being nobody else in the public hearing, then I'll move it over to, to the level of our, our council and, and any take or information or questions from the council.
I have a quick question. What you have on the screen right now, I mean, is that the current zoned zoning map?
This is zoning, yeah. This is not the future land use map. This is zoning.
So, the, the corners on the, I guess, on the south side are both zoned? C1?
C1. The pink is C1. I believe the lot A, the one that's just around the southeast side, it's zoned C1, but it's a vacant C1. There's not a business in operation there. The only businesses that we have are directly south on the southwest corner of the Bryan Medical Plaza.
So, the Medical Plaza is zone C1?
C1. That is correct.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on, hold on. Let me say, let me check to make sure that everybody has, has, Mr. Martinez.
How big is the lot?
It's 200 by 270.
What, what, what types of businesses could not go there on that, with that dimension, Richard? What type of businesses could not be there? I mean, it's, it's, it's maybe like almost an acre, right? Or what is it?
It's over an acre.
Over an acre?
It's an acre and a quarter.
Acre and a quarter.
I know we couldn't build like a Home Depot there or whatever, right? But so, just to give a, a perspective, what couldn't be there? But would not fit there in terms of the lot dimension? What are we limited to in terms of, of businesses there?
The lot size is warranted for typical businesses on those types of locations such as the national pharmacy stores, your CVS, your Walgreens, your C stores, your Quaterburgers, your Chick-fil-A's. Blue Wave would not fit there, obviously. But many of your investment franchises, your Jack's Boxes, your, or extension of that nature.
The Starbucks, yeah, yeah. I, I hear you.
Starbucks, everybody loves Starbucks.
I guess what I'm trying to say or, or get a grasp of is, is a, you know, I know that there's an issue with, with, and Dr. Calasos as well. I know there's an issue with the sale of alcohol and, yeah, there's the Loretto down there. I live on Bryan as well and, and I know the traffic is, is terrible and has been for years. And it's time, I know we're going to widen the road from business to 495 already and I think with the next couple of years, hopefully, we can go another mile. So, I don't have a problem with it being commercial, right? I guess the problem that I would have, if anything, would be late hours, you know, a 24-hour type of thing, given the nature of the fact that it's, it is still somewhat of a quiet neighborhood. So, that's why I asked, Richard, what type of businesses could go there? Like, you know, I know that we have a lot of issues with the Howling Duck down the, is that what it's called? Whistling Duck?
Yes.
I've never been there before.
Let's keep it to the agenda, please.
The issue was, was noise and whatever, because that's open till 2:00 and whatnot, whatever. So, I guess that's the major concern amongst the neighbors and of course, traffic, but traffic will be alleviated once we get around to getting the right of way and to expand the road. So, I'm not really concerned about traffic because it'll come with the business. But just to get a sense as to what, what, what it's kind of meant for, it'd be like a smaller type of place, not, not so much something like, I don't know, something that might stay open till 2:00 in the morning and be loud and stuff.
I don't think that's a type of business that we're going to try to put in there by any means. And I think from what you all said earlier also, that whatever, whatever business is going to come in has to come in before you really permit apartments and such and you can regulate it.
And how much, how much leeway do we have on that? I mean, like say, it's, it's C3 and it's sold, whatever, can we deny the Stripes to build there?
No, the only thing that would come before the board would be any type of special use permit, like for the sale of alcohol, but the actual building going up, that would be approved internally in my office.
If it's a C3.
If it's a C3.
If it's any, any zoning. Any zoning, anybody that builds does not have to come back to the, to the council to, to get an approval on, on a type of business that's going to go in there. Once we zone, whatever zone we've zoned, C1, C2, C3, there is allowable uses under those zones and those uses are allowable and there's, there's no, there's no turning back. You can't say no to something that's allowable in that zone. So, now that we, I've said that, can you give us the little synopsis of what is allowable on a C2?
Under the C3.
Let's say C2. We all know that C1 is, is basically your.
Office space.
Office space. And C3 is your, your.
General.
Like Mr. Calasos was saying, your Starbucks, your Quaterburger, your, your Stripes and that kind of thing. So, what's a C2?
A C2, you can build a commercial plaza, which opens it up a little bit more than a C1. You could have like a dry cleaners, you could have like a piano lessons, a little bit more tailored towards public services.
Beauty shop.
Beauty shop, nail salon, hair salon. You cannot, however, have a restaurant without a conditional use permit.
So, a restaurant would be allowable?
A restaurant would be allowable with the conditional use permit.
With the conditional use permit.
So, that would come back to the board.
And that would come back to us.
Correct.
And that would be required, a notification of all the, all the residents in the area.
And that's a scenario where I could see alcohol possibly being served if it were to become a restaurant under a C2.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Blotter.
So, the Loretto is a C3?
C2. Would the applicant be okay with a C2?
Can I pull all the council person before we?
Yeah, I was going to ask that question. Would you feel okay with a C2? What would the other corners?
Before.
C2.
Before you, before you answer, before you answer, ma'am, I want to hear Ms. Ochoa so all the councils can give you the, their take and their, so you can have an idea of how everybody's thinking right now.
You know, I've heard everybody speak and I, I understand the residents that live there, but I'm a firm believer that Mission's on the grow and we're going forward. I would love to see a Starbucks there. I drink Starbucks every single day. As a matter of fact, I would love to see Alex Need get with you, Dr. Calasos, to see if we can make that possible. I do have a concern with having something like a Stripes or something of that sorts and table back to what Mayor Protem said was, you know, once we give the C3, if that's the wish of the mayor and city council, it's kind of hard because that kind of ties us up. the wish of the mayor and city council, it's kinda hard, because that kinda ties us up to, we're gonna give you that, and then it's not something, you know, if I were to give that right now, it would be some type of that business, but then I don't have that right to tell you what to put there. But once a C3 passes, if that's the wishes of this council, we can't go backwards. But with that being said, I know that you're a Missionite, Dr. Caravos, and you're willing to work with us and City of Mission, and, you know, I know that we can meet in the middle for this, because it is growing. Traffic is a huge concern there, but of course, as we continue to grow and make those accommodations, that I foresee will be fixed.
Now, Mr. Plata, I will recognize you to ask the question.
Yeah, that was my concern, I mean, I hope they understand that, and that they feel comfortable going with a C2.
Are you, Dr. Caravos, you wanna come up to the podium? I know you don't need the mic, but we need it for the record.
You shouldn't see me last night for the Cowboys game, definitely no mic needed.
We need it for the record, ma'am.
So yes, I would be willing to, I mean, you know, my dad taught me to be humble. My heart says a C3, but I understand, so yes, I would be willing to.
C2?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready for our motion?
I would like to move.
Hold on, I recognize Ms. Gatta.
My motion would be to approve a C2 zoning for the corner of Bryan and 495.
A second motion.
We have a motion and a second, and it's open for individual counselor input, just to state that a Starbucks is a C2, and, yeah, no, that's it.
Still have a Starbucks.
No.
With the conditional use.
We have, for clarification, Starbucks would, you still would have to ask for a conditional use permit also, besides the C2, additional use permit, and you would come back to us.
You would need it for the drive-through window, which is very important, yes.
And so, we have a, we have a question over here.
So upon it passing today, the C2, after she sells, is there a possibility that she can come back later? Like, I mean, I hope that it sells right away, but you never know how the real estate is right now. Would she have the opportunity to come back on a later basis to maybe get a C3?
Absolutely, she could reapply after six months. Let's say in a year or two, Bryan Road gets widened, then that would certainly be a possibility to come back at that time and consider a C3.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last chance for the council to, for input. Everybody okay?
I'm ready to vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and I cast my vote in favor of a C2. Okay? And that would be ordinance 4706, so you can make reference to ordinance 4706, for the record.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Starbucks for everybody next time. Starbucks for everybody.
I'll take a pumpkin slice.
I will call for agenda item 1.1B, 1.1B, conditional use permit, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
You know what, let's hold off for a second or two for the, yes.
Yeah, 12 fueron?
It's snowing, man.
Starting to fall so hot.
More than 40 minutes?
It's really not that big of a difference between C1 and C2.
Okay, Mr. Acevedo, this is conditional use permit, give us the data so I can open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window for Brick Fire Pizza &amp; More. This is at 704 East Griffin Parkway, Suite 130. This is a 1.24 acre tract of land out of Lot 24-8, West Edition, the Sherland subdivision. The property is along 495, and it is zoned C3. Brick Fire Pizza &amp; More LLC and care of Steven Alanis is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September 26, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this CUP request. The subject site is located within a commercial plaza between Mayberry Avenue and Augusta, along the south side of Griffin Parkway. The applicant is requesting a CUP for a drive-through service window at the existing pizzeria. The establishment has been in existence for about one year now, and the applicant would like to offer the customers the use of a drive-through window. One of the things that we learned at the P&amp;Z meeting is that the actual window has been in existence, and it has been used for some time now. The applicant was not aware that a conditional use permit was required, so they did make that disclosure, that it has been in operation. They also did tell us that throughout the night, you probably get two, at the most, three cars that come through the drive-through window. It's not something that's used a lot, but they do wanna have it available, should anybody wanna use the drive-through window. To get to the drive-through window, you would have to come in through the west side of the parking area, and then wrap around the south side of the building, and the drive-through window's located on the east side of the building as you're driving forward back onto 495. And then there's a secondary driveway that could also be used for people to exit out of the drive-through window. The proposed hours for the drive-through service window are Monday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Friday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. This is an existing plaza, parking and landscaping are existing, and they're meeting code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval of the drive-through window. Staff is recommending a one-year approval to reevaluate after one year, that the CUP not be transferable to others, and that they continue with compliance on fire, building, sign, and health codes. Our city manager is also recommending approval, this is a public hearing, item 1.1B is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Acevedo. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? Please come before the podium and identify yourself, and state your name and address for the record. This is a public hearing, in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Since nobody has approached the podium, I will close the public hearing, and I will open it for further discussion among the council.
I have a question, ma'am. Is the applicant here?
Yes. Mr. Alanis is here.
How you doing, sir?
Hey, David.
Yeah, it's, my only concern that I have is, the back of your, of that property is an alley, right?
There is an alley, but there is space in between the parking and the alley to drive around my property.
Okay, I think if you can, I don't know if you can or not, and it's not gonna affect the fact that I think this is a good idea, but I know that some people drive down the alley to get to the drive-through, and have caused some damage to the neighbors, whatever. I don't know if the city can put up a sign saying this alley does not lead to the drive-through, or?
I can remove those parking lines in the back and just have the staff park on the other side, and that would just be completely open to drive-through.
There's about 15 feet after the parking stop to the alley, so 15 feet is enough for traffic circulating. However?
It could be groomed a little better, I can definitely groom, there's some greenery that comes into, around some of the poles, and I can definitely work on that also.
Yeah, if only that, yeah, okay.
Anybody else? Any questions? I guess clearly mark it, you know, so people will know this is the drive-through, if it goes through or not. This would be ordinance 4707.
Mayor, I'm with our approval.
I have a motion to approve ordinance 4707 in a second, and this I open it for final comments from any of the council persons. There being no comments, go ahead, ma'am.
Do you have plans for a second location?
Yes.
Great.
I have a question. Can we call and pick up at the drive-through?
To be completely honest, I can't call it anything other than a drive-through, but we use it more of a pickup window than anything. We really don't allow people to just go in or there, it's more of you call it in, we'll have it ready for you once you get there. Yeah, definitely we'll have it ready.
Anybody?
I'm good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries at 5:00.
And congratulations.
Thank you. I wanna open 1.1C, conditional use permit, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the installation of 100-foot monopole wireless communications facility with the associated group equipment for T-Mobile. This is at a 3.29 acre tract of land, more or less, of unplotted commercial reserve of Cimarron Country Club Phase 1, Section 1. Property's owned C3, and APC Towers LLC and care of T-Mobile is the applicant. If the council is inclined to approve the conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September 26, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of JR Drive and US Expressway 83 Front Edge, just south of Tremez subdivision. The applicant is proposing to construct a 40-by-40 pad site on the irregular 3.29 acre tract. The site is currently vacant, but does have Barton Creek, a newly constructed commercial plaza to the north, and T-Mobile Wireless is proposing to lease a 40-by-40 foot section to construct the wireless communications tower, similar to the one that we saw on the example that we used here. This one was one that was installed by T-Mobile also, just south of the CWV Park, abutting the Spikes Ford. This one, I believe, is a 150-foot tower, what they would be installing would be a little bit smaller in height. During the P&amp;Z meeting, there was some discussion, some of the residents from Cimarron voiced their concern about the location of the proposed tower, and one of the recommendations that was made was that it be shifted further north and to the northwest. Can you go back to the aerial? What is circled there is the proposed site of the tower, and it was kinda close to Cimarron Drive. So, Cimarron Drive is the main arterial that leads people in and out of Cimarron, so what they recommended was that the antenna be shifted further to the northwest corner of the property, further away from Cimarron Drive. The board did approve the conditional use permit for the tower with those conditions, that they work with staff on finding a better location. Staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit, and we're recommending for a life-of-use approval, that they install an eight-foot opaque fence around the least area, and that they allow other wireless carriers to co-locate onto their antenna. We're also recommending that the CUP not be transferable to others. Our city manager is also recommending approval, this is a public hearing, item 1.1C is now before you.
This is a public hearing for ordinance 4708. This is a public hearing for ordinance 4708. Anybody in favor or against this request? Please come, identify yourself, and name an address, and state your position for or against, please.
Hi, my name's Charlie Mitchell, and I'm for, I represent T-Mobile and APC Towers on this particular location. We did have the planning and zoning meeting. In that meeting, they did talk about the northwest corner originally, but then the, we told them from an RF perspective, from T-Mobile, we had to be in the northeast, and they, in this letter states that as long as we go to the northeast corner. So, the northeast corner would be up in, we have moved it all the way up, yeah, it'd be all the way up in that corner, is where it would be now. And I did send him an email with some examples of a defense and stuff like that, and the specifications of the fans to show the green slats, and we've met, all hit their requirements for that particular location. One thing I wanted to just mention real quick, I don't want to take a lot of your guys' time, is just how many people are affected and would be affected with this tower in this location. For people that live in the area right now, that would be affected in a positive way is 14,000 people. From a, people that come there for work in that area, that would be affected is 15,600 people. And then the average daily vehicle that's covered on that I2 that goes across there is 48,000 people that would be affected. And there's a month, about 100 E911 calls that are called from that location per month that would be affected.
We do have a question for you, Mr. Gatta, you were recognized to ask the question.
Real quick, sir, and this is mostly for our staff here. Jaime, my recommendation was based on, my understanding was, it was gonna be shifted over to the northwest. And so what we're saying is, what you're saying now is that you received a letter that the northeast?
Yes.
It says the northeast in here.
And so the concern that I would have there, Jaime, is any future development that the owner of the property might wanna do? One, and number two, it's right next to a public roadway, and there's a lot of traffic through there that come in from Sherry, that come through the back to be able to go to Antojitos and all those restaurants along the Front Edge Road. So I would really hate to see, you know, that type of structure right adjacent to the public roadway. And so, my recommendation was just based on the northwest section of the lot being used, and so, what difference would that make to the use of the antennas?
From, we have an RF engineer from T-Mobile that can probably speak more on that. One thing that we did talk to the planner, commission planners about was how a tower monopole breaks down. That was a concern, safety concern, so if it falls over with the wind impact, you know, there's, they're all built for about, to withstand about 137 miles an hour just by itself, but if something were to happen with it, the way the towers, and we can get this done by an engineer letter, they collapse. The most that it would go is about 20 to 25 feet one direction or another, because what they do is they collapse in, the way they build them now. So, we would never be able to go 100 feet over that road, or 100 feet over that road. And where the tower would actually be from that road, we would still be about 75 to 100 feet from that particular road. It would be more, the compound may have a fence there, but where the actual tower's gonna sit, it would be closer to where the grass area is up there, yeah, just to the right of that, and it would have enough distance.
I would like to see more of a clear foundation of what we're doing. Again, I wasn't a different impression, and so, you know, I like to review this a little bit further, Jaime, I mean, I don't know what the council feels about this, but I would really like to see exactly where it's gonna sit, and the specs behind it.
I would agree with you, Martin, I think.
This is a public hearing, so let me, let me close the public hearing, and then...
One other thing that I would like to say is just from, from T-Mobile's perspective, and one thing that's affected by this is also is the call center that they have, they have 1,900 people here, and the largest call center in the whole United States, and this has a big, this has an impact on that side as well, on the coverage objective.
Right, well...
Mayor, can I have a quick comment?
This is a public hearing, so let me close the public hearing, and...
So, I'm open to any questions that you guys may have, and if you guys want the RF engineer to speak up of why?
Let's close, let's close the public hearing, and then we can ask specific questions, and we'll bring you back up. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the request? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this request? Before I close the public hearing, sir, are you, you gonna say something in favor or against?
Yes. My name's Kyle Elliott, I live in Houston, Texas. We're in favor of this potential cell tower here. One thing is, this is a very important site to T-Mobile, just because of the coverage area that it fills in, and moving it, since this was a...
Are you the engineer?
I work on the engineering side, yes.
Let's close the public hearing, and then we'll bring you up for questions for the council.
Okay.
Direct questions, okay? Appreciate it, sir. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this request? There being nobody to the podium, I will close the public hearing, and now I'll open it for the council, and now we'll ask T-Mobile and their engineers to come before the mic and answer the direct questions from my council, please, if you could. Thank you for your... And Ms. Gatta, now you can ask the question that you want to ask.
Yeah, I think he was gonna address it, my question was, is, what, is there a huge impact if you move it to the northwest corner?
You want to speak? Yeah, so, since this is such a high priority site for T-Mobile to fill in this coverage gap, they've already kinda started the environmental process. Every cell phone tower has to go through an extensive environmental process, you know, drilling the property, drilling where the tower's gonna be to measure the soil, as far as, and then clearing out what potential artifacts may be on the property or whatever, it's a three to six month process. So that process... So, that process, since that has already started, there's a limit to how far we can go. And, I mean, we could obviously restart that whole process again, that's not an issue, but it just delays the, being able to build the tower. But if we move it to that northwest corner, we would have to restart that whole entire environmental process. So, being able to move it up a little bit from where we originally were proposing is not an issue, but to go all the way to another side of the property would result in us having to drill the site again and go through the entire environmental process. And with T-Mobile's, you know, coverage gap in this area, it was one of their very high priority sites, so a lot of that backend stuff has already been started, but I just kind of want to make the council aware of where we are on that process.
How long would that process take to start again?
The environmental process? From start to finish, it's usually a three-month minimum on the environmentals.
But that's just the environmental side and the engineering construction side that he does. This is the RF engineer that talks about how each site talks to each other, so he can explain why this corner is better than this corner. From a RF radio frequency is what RF stands for, if anybody didn't know. So, he can explain why they needed, why it's better in this corner than that corner.
Is it customary for you to do the work before you get your permit, or what happened?
From a soils report, you have to get the soils report to even see if the location's okay to build. So, to be able to lease the land from the guy, we've got to make sure that environmentally, that the area is okay to build. So, that's how that process starts for a cell tower.
Go ahead, sir. Identify yourself, please.
David Oars, twenty-one sixty-eight Stonehaven, New Braunfels, Texas. The main coverage objective is a lot of commercial property to the east, which would be Walmart, I believe, a huge HEB, big movie theater. So, if we move it to the west, we will have less coverage in building coverage in those commercial buildings.
Would the height, if you increase the height, moving it to the northwest, keeping it in the northwest, but just increasing the height of the tower, would that help that coverage that you're looking for?
Very little. I don't think, we don't want too much height because then we could create interference with other sides around there.
I'm sorry, I'm a little selfish on this one because I am a T-Mobile user for over fifteen years, and my kids will be so ecstatic once this goes up because once we hit that area, I was at Walmart today and no service whatsoever, and I thought I had lost my phone. Also, I think it's an awesome idea if you'd look towards like one oh seven way out there because T-Mobile doesn't work over there either. But I'd like to consider, I've taken into account everything that you all said, the hard work and everything, just making sure that our mission nights get self-service in that area, because, I mean, from my personal experience, it is really bad. If there's an emergency, I'm not able to call out to anybody.
Okay. Any other?
I want to be able to show you guys just kind of a map real quick of what it looks like now.
Unless you have a direct question from a council person, please. Do we have a direct question for them?
Maybe this is for Jaime. What's the length of the east corner to the west corner? What's that?
It's approximately about five hundred and fifty feet from JR Drive to the northwest corner. Now, I do want to clarify something, Martine, that the P&amp;Z board did approve this subject to getting it as close to the northwest corner as possible. If the letter says something otherwise, it might be a typo because the board recommendation was to work with staff, getting it as close to that northwest corner as possible. That was the recommendation by the P&amp;Z.
So, I guess my question would be, Mr. Garsa, what is the final staff recommendation for the council?
Well, I mean, you know, one of the things that we look at is the placement when we look at these type of requests, right? And so, when we did the one, so you all did the ones on one of our parks?
Yes, on Catholic World Veterans.
I didn't do it.
Who did that one, Jaime? I'm sorry.
It was T-Mobile, but it wasn't APC Towers.
And so, one of the things that we did is, we have a lease agreement with T-Mobile, but one of the things that we worked out was the exact location where we wanted the tower. Because to sometimes, you know, to the neighboring areas, it can become an eyesore. And so, all I'm saying is that we have an area that's well trafficked to go into the businesses right in front of the frontage. And so, you know, do we want to put a site like that, a structure like that, at the T of that intersection? And that's why I'm saying, I mean, this is a conditional use permit. This is where you all get to work with the city to be able to accommodate the needs of our neighbors as well. And so, we're asking, I mean, how difficult could it be to be able to move, you know, as close northwest as we can? And so, we're asking, well, is it have to do with the height? Because if that's what it is, well, maybe we can approve a larger height, you know, to accommodate the concern that Cimarron has and the concern that I have right now. And so, what can we do to work together in that sense?
Just kind of adding on to what you're saying, if we can't go all the way to the corner, to the west corner, could we kind of, could we do it midway? Just to get it away from the corner and away from JR Drive, basically?
Right.
Right?
That's something that we would have to work with T-Mobile or for them to reevaluate how it fits within their, within the coverage objective. You know, this is what I was just going to show you. This is naked coverage, where there's no coverage. This is kind of how it fills it in. And in that particular location, so they'd have to go redo some RF studies. Environmentals would have to be done on that side of it to see if that's something that would work in that location as well. One thing with this particular site, it's considered the third most important site for T-Mobile in the whole country right now, for various reasons, for the call center and the coverage objectives and things like this. So, they are on a time crunch as well on that particular location, and that's why the environmentals and things, to make sure the location worked for them previously was done in that spot.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
In other municipalities, or I'm sorry, other cities, do you have towers like this? And are they close? Because you're obviously picking somewhere in other cities where you're used to placing them. Am I correct?
No, absolutely. You know, we do a lot in Houston, which has their own complete tower commission board that deals with it and other municipalities, and we do have them in the corners. And we could, I could probably give you a hundred different shots of them that could be right on the corners, even on the bottom corner. As long as you meet certain setbacks, and we do meet all the city requirements in that particular location, we do meet all those requirements.
Okay, ma'am.
I have one more question. What is the coverage distance on this particular antenna?
What's the coverage?
Yes, how?
The area?
Distance, area.
Roughly, depends on the rad center and stuff, but roughly about seven tenths of a mile.
Seven tenths of a mile? So-
That's not a lot.
It's not a lot, is it? So, you have, to get really good coverage, you have to have an antenna every seven tenths of a mile?
That's not for outdoor coverage. That would be for indoor, indoor commercial coverage, which would be like a Walmart, a place that's hard to penetrate.
Okay, well-
So, do we have a copy of the radius that it covers? Do you have that map?
That's what this is.
Is it on file, sir? Is it on file with our planning and zoning?
It was sent to, I mean, this is what we had at the time. There's other documents that were sent that aren't on this particular one. This is the same one from the P&amp;Z meeting. I don't have it on the file. I just have it where I could hand out a couple to you and just show you, or walk across in front of you guys and show you the difference, if you would like to see it.
I don't need to see it, but if anybody else needs to see it, just give them a wave, and so he can show it to you. I'm pretty set on the northwest side.
The green is, there's no coverage, and then the red, the red and yellow.
Well, I see the colors, but that doesn't, really didn't mean anything to me because what is, what is that depicting? What does it mean? What, how wide is that green?
If I were to take the streets, we could, this is basically a map, these are all the streets. I have to go back.
But I can't see the streets, so I don't, I can't tell how wide that is.
Well, basically, if I were to be at the Mission Event Center, or at Walmart, or HEB, or Ross, or Target, or any of that area down Sherry Road, I will now be able to use my phone. Right now?
Not if it's seven tenths of a mile?
No, right now, she would not.
Right now, I cannot use my phone whatsoever because of the buildings. So, this tower is going to help get service whenever I'm inside the building.
He just said it was seven tenths of a mile.
Yeah, but the Walmart.
For indoor.
For indoor. So, the event center's way past-
For the Walmart and all those.
Yeah, if you're talking outdoor coverage, it's much further.
No, we're talking indoor.
It won't affect our-
No, but we're looking at our event center that's on Sherry Road. That's what the- Inside our event center.
It's behind the HEB.
Yeah. It would penetrate that a lot more than it's being penetrated now.
Okay, I think we've had enough information to make a decision, and unless somebody, one of the council persons, one of the specific, last question, I think we've given them an opportunity to, so, do I?
I move to-
Before you, I intend, I need for the staff to, are you recommending approval on the northwest side, northeast side, or southeast side, southwest side?
My recommendation was based on information that I had, Mayor, and I thought it was the northwest corner. Now, if that's not what it is, maybe we just need to sit down with the company and get some more information and be more prepared with graphs, with the radius of distance that it's actually going to cover, and, you know, all those things. Have we even, did we talk to the owner of the property? Is the owner of the property here? No?
No.
So, if they're okay moving it to the northwest, I mean, I recommend approval on that, but if not, I think, I think there's more information that we need to really sit down and-
Isn't that, Jaime, isn't that what you-
That's what the P&amp;Z approved. They said as close to the northwest corner as possible.
So, the motion, then I'll entertain a motion, but the motion needs to be very clear, the position of the antenna.
I move to table, Mayor. I'm, I'm, I don't think we have all the information that we-
I will recognize your table motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a table motion and a second, and this is open for further discussion from the other two city council persons. Any questions? Mr. Martinez?
Maybe Mr. Garsa can meet with y'all together.
I just, I'm very disappointed that we've got to this point to table it because obviously this company has taken a lot of effort, time, energy, and whenever something comes before us, I expect it to come with full information.
Mr. Martinez, anything, any comments or anything?
When's the next meeting, Mayor?
In two weeks.
So, it'll be tabled for that if it's tabled?
Yes. Any final notes? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I did not hear a majority, so if I, I would ask for a hand vote, please. All those in favor say aye with a hand vote, and all those nay. Okay, so, did you vote?
I voted to table, so Martine can get more information, but let's get this done in two weeks.
Yes.
Okay, so it's three two for the record, for the table, and the motion passes. It is tabled. This item is tabled. Now, I'll open it for a public hearing, the conditional use permit, Mr. Acevedo, one point one D.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item one point one D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window to twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for Snowball Express. This is at seventeen twelve West Griffin Parkway, being lot twenty-two of block four, Oakwood Estates subdivision. The property is owned C three, and if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The request is again to operate for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The site is located approximately sixty-four feet west of Christie Lane along the north side of Griffin Parkway. The applicant obtained, first obtained a CUP for a snow cone stand on two thousand and thirteen. The access is off of four ninety-five. It's got a twenty-four foot driveway which leads traffic in and out of the facility. And when he first operated, the applicant submitted a conditional use permit application that stated that he would be closing relatively early. However, as the time went on, the applicant extended his hours, and most recently, we started getting complaints from some of the neighbors that he was open till one-thirty, two o'clock in the morning. So, we approached the applicant, told him to come in and reapply because he wasn't allowed to be operating at those late hours. And he did come in approximately on April twenty-fifth of two thousand and eighteen, almost six months ago, at which time the recommendation was that he be allowed, or the approved recommendation was that he be allowed to operate, but only till ten PM. That at ten PM, all business operations must cease, which this meant the drive-through windows and the walk-up traffic. The whole business needed to shut down at ten. And that's been an ongoing battle with this applicant, Mayor and Council. They've been operating past ten PM to this date. We got a letter that was submitted from one of the neighbors that will attest to the late hours, and the complaint from day one hasn't really been against the business, but it's been against the customers that come in and play the loud music, they're revving their engines, and disturbing the quiet neighborhood to the north. And we do support small businesses. We want them to succeed, but we also want them to comply with the noise regulations and to cease all activities at ten PM. Since nothing really has changed since the last time that the CUP was awarded, staff feels that the business should remain with those hours. And staff has recommended denial of the request for the extended hours past ten PM. We're saying that the CUP can continue, but that the business must close at ten PM. Our city manager is also recommending denial of the extended hours. This is a public hearing. Item, item one point one D is now before you.
This is a public hearing for one point one D conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against the request, will you please come up and state your name and address for the record, sir?
Excuse me, sir. Yes, sir. Salute. Good evening. Didn't expect to be here so late. I'm sure you didn't either. I'm going to try to keep this one brief, even though this has probably got as much disagreement as some of the other things you've had today. I represent Snowball Express. The principal, Mr. Algen Javier, is not able to be here. His mother was sick, and he traveled to India to see her, and he was, he's still not back yet. I understand he was having, his flight was delayed. He had planned to be here. We've come back and after the, after the commission imposed new conditions, we realized that there were things that Snowball Express had, was supposed to do under the ordinance and had not done. And so, my clients spent a few months coming into compliance with all of the things that were required by the city. There was a fence that had to be built. There was a grease trap that existed but had not been inspected by the city. There were lighting and several other issues that took place at the, at the two different locations that he had. And he has now come into compliance with all of the city requirements except the hours. Now, we strongly disagree with what Mr. Acevedo said. I read the ordinance that you all passed, and you said that as far as the conditional use permit, that the hours under the conditional use permit end at ten o'clock. Now, you do not have a conditional use permit for walk-up windows, and you only have it for drive-through windows. My client closes his drive-through windows at ten o'clock and opens up his walk-up windows, and he has the same right as any other business to operate any hours that they want when there is no conditional use permit required. And we continue to, well, we dispute that. Again, my client has received citations, and we are disputing those in court. We're here asking for twenty-four hour, to be allowed to be open twenty-four hours, just like other businesses in the city, such as Whataburger, McDonald's, Stars. in the city, such as Whataburger, McDonald's, Stars. Stars has walk-up windows. They're open later hours than my client. You all have a lot of inconsistent hours in your permits, right? You're restricting my clients to more, less hours than you allow people who sell beer. Apparently, raspas are more dangerous than beer under the mission ordinances. I really don't believe that's true. I'd ask you to reconsider those issues, and I'd ask you to approve 24-hour drive-through windows for this raspa stand. My client has made efforts to comply with everything. He has, I do wanna say this, he has gone out and had his employees talk to all of the customers and tell them, hey, don't make, lower your radios, don't make so much noise, and tried to cut down the noise that, that was being complained of. I think he's addressed a lot of the issues. I understand there's still complaints that are, that are being made, and I think maybe those may just be people who are angry about perhaps other things. My client is committed to try to comply with all the rules, and if you all impose some reasonable requirements, he will try to meet them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in, this is a public hearing, in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Go ahead, Mayor, and state your name and address and...
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Laura Camacho. Soy la manejadora de Snowball Express 495. Este, pues estoy aquí humildemente, este, pidiéndole la petición que nos dé permiso de abrir un poquito más tarde la raspera. No tengo una foto, no tengo una copia, este, donde hay una foto de la raspera donde el señor Acevedo está diciendo que la ventanilla de enfrente puede quedarse abierta hasta las 2:00 de la mañana. El problema primero era el drive-through, que teníamos que cerrarlo a las 10:00. Seguimos esa regla, lo cerramos a las 10:00. Después vinimos, bueno, vino mi voz y le, el señor le dio, este, ese papel, lo cual a mí solamente me mandaron una foto, es por eso que no lo tengo conmigo. Este, después siguieron los policías. Primero iban la ciudad, después fueron los policías, este, a darnos multas, a darnos tickets, porque la ventanilla estaba abierta. Este, también muchas veces fue, ha ido el policía porque los vecinos supuestamente le llaman para decir que tenemos la música alta, que hay mucho ruido. Yo quisiera saber, este, yo sé que no hay aquí ningún oficial que ha ido a darnos una multa, pero yo quisiera, este, me hubiera gustado que estuvieran aquí y ellos dijeran cuántas veces se han topado ellos con eso, con ese problema, que tenemos música, o sea, eso, eso es una mentira, la verdad. Este, la línea, antes sí, este, se nos hacía la línea muy larga, y a lo mejor sí bloqueábamos la entrada en la colonia que está atrás, tal, o sea, sí, lo reconozco, pero ahora, hace mucho tiempo que no tenemos eso, no pasa eso. Este, y eso de que tenemos música tarde tampoco, o sea, eso tampoco, no, no, no pasa. Entonces, este, pues ojalá que tomen una, una buena decisión, verdad.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on a conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? There is nobody approaching the, the microphone in the, in the podium, so I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask for the, the council. We'll start with you, Mr. Martinez.
I have a question for Chief Dominguez. How many nuisance calls have we gotten about, if any, about this location?
If I remember correctly, there's about eight citations we issued since the last time we did, and obviously, those are all driven based on calls for service from that name and the name of the house.
And it all involved incidents past 10?
Yes.
And?
See, one of the things is that I gave my officers aware of my copies of the orders for both the one on 495 and the one on Mayberry, and gave them to my supervisors on the graveyard shift. Graveyard shift starts at 10:00 PM, ultimately, 6:00 AM.
And how many of those calls that they did respond to for service were actually confirmed that there was, that there were actually loud music and...
Well, I can say at least those eight, sir, because eight involved citations.
Citations for opening or citations for the loud, loud noise?
I believe all of them were started by the call for service because of the music. They arrived and obviously felt that they were using the evidence, and therefore gave citations for violation of the order.
Okay, thank you. Any other council person? Go ahead, Mr. Plata.
I don't think it's just the noise the problem. Unfortunately, I am sympathize for the applicant, but maybe it's not the right place, and maybe we need to, in the future, take that into consideration, because I myself went by there to, to make sure that I make an educated decision on this one, but I went by there, and I was online for about 35 minutes, and I was concerned in case of an emergency or something, I was not gonna be able to get out of there. So, it took 35 minutes to get to my vehicle. Maybe there was a large order in front of me, but I personally feel very uncomfortable being online because there's no room to get out of there. I mean, once you get in there, so if they wanna keep the service window open for 24 hours, do we have not parking space to, for people to park and get off and go to the walk, walk-up and order? I mean, how many parking spaces does that have?
It's got six parking spaces. I mean, we, we could also consider the stacking around the building, but actual parking spaces, there's only six. Now, in talking to the applicant in, in prior weeks, I, I was made aware that they have an agreement with the flower shop next door, but that could be seen as something temporary. I mean, if, if they change ownership, they're at the flower shop, that, that agreement could be thrown out of the window. I mean, it's not something that's permanent. But they do have, for a size, for a building of this size, they do meet the parking requirements. But this is seen primarily as a drive-through business.
And I understand it meets the parking requirement for the building of this size, but the sales or the number of people, the vehicles that drive by there or they try to service, I don't think it does meet those requirements or, there is an issue there.
Yeah, unfortunately, I guess it's, it's, I guess the business has outgrown this location.
That's not the case on the one on Mayberry, because that's got a lot of parking spaces and a lot of area.
But this one, I mean, it was like, I mean, I would hate to put a citizen in that position, to be honest. Towards, it was very uncomfortable to get out of there.
Any other comments?
Mr. Acevedo, we have met with the owner several occasions, right? Because he's reached out to me through Facebook various times. I think that the disconnect between what he assumes is because there's other businesses down 495, and I'm speaking about the 495 location, that is open through like a drive-through kinda with hours, and he sends pictures and all that, but that's not what he applied for. He applied for the raspa stand, and so it's two different conditional use permits.
Correct.
Am I correct? Okay, and so he's really wanting a 24-hour service. He want, he feels that he should be given the same opportunity as a Whataburger. And I told him that staff would be meeting with him, which I know that you all did meet with him. I just, at this time, I get so many complaints from the neighbors, and in general, they say they're supposed to be closed by 10:00, and they're still open through drive-through. And I have pictures to show various nights that they are open. And so I'm concerned about that, just like Mr. Plata. I just don't think that right now we're, for this type of business, 24-hour. And my question to you would be also, is there other cities that have raspa stands open at 24-hour? Are they allowed that, or would, is this the first of its kind request?
He's got other operations, but I don't believe those other operations that he has are open 24 hours. As far as there being other businesses, I can't really say that, that I know that answer. I mean, all the other raspa stands in Mission close at 10:00 PM. I can speak for Mission. They all cease their operations at 10:00.
Okay.
All of them, they're on 10:00.
And there's one like half a block down.
There's one half a block down, and we've had issues with that lady because she's, she sometimes stays a little bit past 10:00 PM, 10:30, but I've already made those calls so that she is in compliance as well.
Any other questions? Final notes? And this would be ordinance 4708. If it passes, am I correct? If it passes, but the recommendation from the planning and zoning is to deny, and the staff recommendation is to deny also, what is the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to deny on the 24-hour a day. That's just not, it doesn't make any sense to me.
I recognize your motion, Mr. Martinez.
Second.
And we have a second to deny the 24-hour ultimate. Final notes from any of the council persons? Ms. Garcia, you have a question?
Question, yes. If this conditional use permit is denied, as the motion is, what happens to the current conditional use permit? Is that basically voided?
Or it goes back to 10?
Or what hap, what's the, what's the, do you, can you...
Yeah, Ms. Garcia, is, this, this is a separate, staff treated, this is a completely separate application. So if the council were to approve this request, I would ask that you, that you rescind the previous CUP. However, if the council decides that, to deny the CUP, then the existing CUP remains.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any final?
Don't want him to be...
I have a, a comment, just, you know, I, I envision, and I see it reasonable, if maybe on Friday and Saturdays, they can stay open till, till midnight, but the, the 24-hour thing is the one that I just can't get past. That's not, that's not a reasonable request.
Any final? All those in favor say aye for denial?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, and it'll be 5-0. The ordinance 4708 will, will not pass.
Eight.
Public hearing in item E, conditional use permit, Mr. Acevedo?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for four drive-through service windows on a, to a 24-hours-a-day, seven-days-a-week operation for Snowball Express. This is at 3124 North Mayberry Road, being a 1.27 acres out of the west, 210 feet of the north, 223 feet of lot 28-9, West Edition of Cherry Land subdivision. The property is owned C2, and if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September 26, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request from, from going to, closing operations at 10:00 PM to being open till 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The subject site is at the southeast corner of Mayberry Road in Tunel Line, and this one is a, a second establishment for the, for a snow cone stand. This is the same owner of the previous item that was just seen, and this one opened a little bit later. This one opened in 2017, at which time we gave him a, a building permit because he did show a much larger four-drive-through service window establishment. Again, initially, when this conditional use permit came to the city, it had hours of operation ending at near 10:00 PM. And it was given, and it started operating, and soon after that, we also started receiving calls that they were operating until 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning. So just like the previous item that we just saw, we brought it up to the owner's attention. They came in, in April, and they applied for a conditional use permit for extended hours. However, that conditional use permit was, was not approved for extended hours. It was approved with the condition that the business cease all operations at 10:00 PM. The request here is similar to the one that we saw at the previous item. I mean, they're, they're asking for a 24-hour drive-through service operation. This property does a but residential community to the south, and there's also another residential lot to the east. You also have Veterans High School across the street to the west, and we have some more residential land to the north. Staff does support local businesses, and we do want the business to stay, but however, we, we are recommending that the hours remain the same, that the business remain open till 10:00 PM. This is what the Planning and Zoning Commission also ruled. They ruled that the establishment cab remain open, however, they limited the drive-through window to 10:00 PM. Staff is recommending denial of the extended hours past 10:00 PM, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing for a conditional use permit. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you. Alex Moreno, on behalf of Snowball Express. I would just ask that you consider the remarks I've made previously, and I only have one additional remark. If, if, of course, this location is a little bit different than the other location, and I ask perhaps if you would consider granting the permit on a conditional basis, under, with the, with the kind of time that was suggested by Mr. Martinez, on perhaps a provisional basis of maybe 60 days, and come back and see how that works out. And that's the only thing I, I have to suggest to you, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alex.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the, the request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? There being no person coming to the podium, I will close the public hearing and open it for the council's direct comments. Anybody? Mr. Martinez, you wanna...
Yes, Mayor. Well, this site is, is markedly different than the other one on 495. This one has a lot more parking spaces, can actually, has a proper drive-through to where you could get out if you, if you still have any emergency. This is, this is one where I wouldn't have a problem if on weekends it's open till midnight, but I have...
Which, which days would you want for them to do?
Friday or Saturday.
Friday and Saturday?
Yeah.
By then, Saturday?
Yeah, but the 24-hour thing, it's, I don't, no, it's, that's, that's jumping way too fast.
Do I have any other further discussions? If you want to, you can put it into a formal motion.
I, before you make the motion, can I have? I'm okay, Mr. Martinez, with making some type of trial, because I do receive a lot of phone calls from the neighbors from there. I do know that I had called our city manager about two weeks, and someone else, because they were selling, they just, out of the blue, started selling like water Mexican drinks that you, right in front with a table, and different things like that without having a permit to sell that. And so the neighbor was, because of the traffic and all of that. I do see that a lot of the, the children that walk across from the elementary school and the high school go and wait for their parents there after school, and safety is a big concern for me, too, because it shouldn't be somewhere where they go and just wait for their parents and chill. So I think that, although I'm not totally against the midnight, I just think that we need to take into consideration the complaints and how many times law enforcement is there, and safety.
And what is the, the complaint number on this location, if any?
The last time I checked was a couple of weeks ago, sir. We've had several complaints at that location.
You wanna put in a formal motion for your adjustment and...
I'll make a motion if, if council's, if legal council's okay with a conditional 60-day basis of, of testing it out for Friday and Saturday midnight.
For how long?
60 days.
60 days?
60 or 90 days, yeah.
Okay.
And see if, and kind of get a, a sense of, of whether or not that's a good idea.
Which one?
Do I hear a second?
60. 60 or 90, we need to do 60 or 90.
Which one do you want, 60 or 90, sir?
We'll 90 days.
90 days, okay.
What, what days, Joe? Friday and Saturday to midnight? I second that motion, but just make sure that he follows the hours of operations, please.
Mr. Mayor, I, I apologize for interrupting. I know there's a motion and a second. I just, there is a current CUP that's pending regarding this particular location, and, and I don't know if we can ask Mr. Azavell when that expires.
Mr. Azavell, when does the CUP expires?
It would expire the first meeting in May, because we, we gave it in April at the P&amp;Z, so we gave it the first week or, or the first meeting in May of 2018.
So the motion has to show that, that we rescind the current CUP?
And so that would, that would be my request, Mayor, only because you're gonna have two CUPs outstanding, and, and they're gonna be conflicting. But, but if?
Do you choose to withdraw your second, Mr. Plata? So we can add the, the, we send to another CUP?
When does the CUP expire?
In, in May of next year.
Can't we just make an amendment to it?
Yes, we can, but if he withdraws it and he, he redraws it, it'd be a lot easier than having to go two, two or three times.
So I can withdraw my second?
So you redraw his second, do you withdraw your motion, Mr.?
I rescind it and?
You rescind your motion, now you, now you recognize for the current motion?
We'll clarify to amend the current CUP on a conditional basis of 90 days to extend the hours.
To rescind the current?
Yes. Fridays, Saturdays to midnight.
Are we okay legal? We're okay?
I rescinded the motion, and I made a motion to amend the current CUP to extend the hours of business on Fridays, Saturdays to midnight, and to have that be on a conditional basis for 90 days.
And, and so, Mayor, the, the only concern with that motion is the amending part, our current ordinances. I did look into this, this issue, and the only, our current ordinances, the reason staff accepted this application as a new application was because our current ordinances don't have any method by which to amend. Now, we've never had this process before, and, and Mr. Martinez has made the motion to amend. Staff can definitely comply with that order.
I made the motion to rescind it.
Rescind?
But the current CUP? I rescinded my motion that I made earlier, right? But if, if council is saying that I have to, that we have to rescind the entire ordinance.
The previous one?
The previous ordinance.
That's correct. And now, because, and the reason I'm, I'm making this recommendation, Mayor, is because we currently don't have anything within our ordinances that allows for the amendment of a CUP. So this application is a completely new application for a conditional use permit. So if, if a motion goes through tonight with regards to approving the CUP for, for whatever hours, we're gonna have two CUPs outstanding. And, and if, if the direction of the council through a motion is to amend the previous CUP, staff can comply with that order. I'm just letting the council know that we don't have anything in place to allow for that.
My, my understanding, Council, is that we're actually rescinding the current CUP.
Okay.
That was the, that was the motion that you made.
Yeah, okay, but, and I, and we can't go that route, and I will go that route if we have to, but can there just be a writing between the city and the business owner, then?
As far as?
For the next 90 days, you're allowed to stay open on Fridays, Saturdays till midnight?
Well, it's because this, this would be passed by ordinance, so there would be a requirement on a actual ordinance.
Okay, so I rescind the, the ordinance that is currently in place, and, and I move to approve a new ordinance, which would?
Would be 4708.
4708, which would allow Snowball Express on Mayberry and 2 Mile to remain open conditionally for 90 days, Fridays and Saturdays, until midnight.
Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
We have a motion second. Any final questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Motion passes 4 to 1. Thank you for the public hearings, Mr. Azavell. I would like to move agenda item, Mr. Flores, move agenda item and call agenda item 3.2. Am I in order, Mr. Flores?
Yes, Mayor, I mean, if you wanna call this out of order, yes, Mayor.
Out of order. I would like to call agenda item 3.2, the board appointments, and Ms. Carrillo, I would like to?
Yes, Mayor, Council, item 3.2, our board appointments for the Mission Rail Bridge Advisory Committee, Mission Economic Development Corporation, and Mission Historical Preservation Commission. The mayor's recommendations are as follows. On the Mission Rail Bridge Advisory Board, appoint Mr. Jesús Guerra, Jose M. Garza, term to expire December 31, 2019. Mr. Keith Patridge and Vicente Morales, and Councilwoman Jessica Ochoa, term to expire December 31 of 2020. Mayor Aragón and City Manager Martín Garza will serve in their respective positions. On the Mission Economic Development Corporation Board, the recommendation is to appoint Sonia Trevino to replace Linda Riquenes, who resigned from the board due to moving out to Dallas, term to expire December 31 of 2018. On the Mission Historic Preservation Committee, appoint Mr. Hollis Rutledge, Carlos García, and Adela Ortega, terms to expire December 31, 2020, and appoint Julie Sines, term to expire December 31, 2021.
Do I hear a motion to, to appoint?
Move for approval?
Mayor, motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I'll open it for discussion, any discussion, questions?
Mayor, I have a, I do have a question. We had, on our meeting, I believe that was July the 9th, maybe, when we, we discussed the ordinance on, on the manner on which board appointees would be handled, I was under the impression that we're gonna have a workshop before we moved on with appointments, and I understand that that workshop is, is to be held next month, November. So I'm just wondering, you know, if, if, and I don't have a problem with these appointments, but I would just like to see the, the whole appointment plan for, for these boards to be, to be discussed, as, as you had mentioned, in a workshop setting.
Let, let me clarify on the, on the rail bridge. It is a, is not an advisory board. It's listed here as an advisory board, but it's actually an action board. It is going to be part of, of our 2021 attempt to, to, to begin to, to, on our, on our board, on our bridge permit. And they're gonna be working with us to, to be able to work that part. As far as the, the Mission Rail Bridge Action Board, it should say, needs, needs to be corrected as an action board. And then the Mission Economic Development Corporation, there was a resignation, so the appointment was there, and that's, that's gonna happen every, every time somebody resigns. You know, the Mission Historic Preservation Committee is an ordinance that has already been placed, it's already intact. Am I correct, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, sir, that board has kind of been dormant for a few years.
The board has been dormant, we just wanna, we just wanna re, reinforce the ones that were there, and, and, and replace all those that weren't, that weren't there. As far as, like Julie Sines, Adela Ortega, Hollis, Hollis, you were, you were already part of the board, they're, they're part of the board. The only one, new one is Carlos García, and he's replacing one that, that is there as far as that is concerned. But to answer your question is that, yes, we do have a scheduled November workshop to appoint all the boards.
Do we have a date for that?
Mr. Garza has the date. I had scheduled it for the second Tuesday before Thanksgiving, but I know, are we back to that date, Mr. Garza?
It was scheduled for, what was the original date?
The second Tuesday before Thanksgiving. But just to let you know about the, about the overall, the overall, is that we will, all the appointments for December 20, 20, expired 2018 will be, will be considered at that time, together.
So when is the date for the workshop?
I believe we talked about it coming after from the holiday on the November the 27th. Bless you.
Could we move that date up? Is there a reason why we're waiting so long?
Whichever date is good for the council.
The, I don't, I don't have a, my, my first time was the third week in November, on Tuesday. We moved it on the 27th at the request of the city manager.
Right, that's correct.
The, the city manager for that. But if you wanna move it up forward, I don't, I don't have a problem. We can go the second Tuesday in November. Is that okay?
So while we discuss?
Second Tuesday in November. We have a meeting on the second Tuesday of November.
But we have it on Monday, but we can do it on Tuesday.
No, sir, we've got it. That one, I'll bring it in October. Because of Veterans Day, we're closed on Monday, the 12th. We'll have the meeting on the 13th.
Okay.
I'll bring that before the council.
So let's go, let's go to the second, second Tuesday in November, on the first Tuesday in November.
On the 6th?
On the 6th.
Do we do it on a Wednesday instead of a Tuesday?
That's fine.
The 7th?
The 7th is fine. November the 7th. No, nothing has changed on that, on that.
14th.
That's fine. 14, okay? Everybody's okay with the 14th? I'm pretty open on November, so. We'll set it for November the 14th.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to reconsider with the time, and I would prefer for it to be after 5:00.
Okay, let's do 5:30.
30.
5:30.
November the 14th.
November the 14th.
Will there be food?
We do have a motion and a second.
We also have some questions. Do we have, do the, all these individuals submitted an application to, to serve? Because on the, on the minutes on the agenda, I only saw one individual with a, you only submitted one application.
Yes, sir, for this particular board, I only had an application for this, Mr. Vicente Morales. The other names were given to me by, by the mayor.
They're appointed by the mayor. There is, is an action board, that's why. We don't have a?
I didn't know the difference.
It's, it's not part of the application, it's an action board.
But this is a new board, right?
That's correct.
So this, this board is, doesn't have anything to do with the current permit that we have?
Yes, it does. It does. That's the intent. The intent is for them, this, this experts that we, that we have in the row, to assist us in being able to get the data that we need to take to the Secretary of State Department when we, when we, to package everything that we, along with the Anseldo, the, the, the Iago McKellen Mission Anseldo's Bridge, package, also do the, the railroad part on it. Because the, that's one of the weakest things that, that's happening in, in, in the, in the current route that we're taking to go before the State Department on, on it, that, that it's not, we don't have a, a lot of data in it. So that's what this committee is gonna be doing. And yes, yes, and we may have to be taking trips to Kansas and, and to make it to the railroad companies to, to work with them also.
Should we call it a rail, though, rail bridge committee, if, if that's not the only thing that it encompasses?
See, the thing about it is that we don't wanna step on the current two MOUs that we have with, with the Anseldo's Bridge, which the, one of the MOUs will be coming to the council, am I correct, Mr. Garza? One of the MOUs, we don't wanna step those MOUs deal. This will be separate and independent, pretty much, by itself, to, to add a, a third component, because we do have two current MOUs already that, that are in the process with, with McKellen, Iago, Anseldo's Bridge, the Bridge Board. And, and we don't, and, and they're, they're gonna be working with us also, but this committee will be an action committee to, to do independent work, to, to, to put that, that part of the railroad part that, that is, that, that our MOUs is not covering. You know, so pretty much, that's, that's why, that's the purpose, the primary purpose of it, you know, as far as that is concerned.
I would just like to, Mayor, I would just like to thank everyone that's here that waited during this meeting. I think that it's an honor to have so many that are willing to serve and volunteer as part of our community, and we, I, I look forward to many more, many more of our Missionites to come and apply with Ms. Anna Carrillo at, here at City Secretary's Office, so that we can make them a part of our boards here within our city. So thank you.
And, and also, just to add a little bit more, I'm, I'm gonna use the Mission Historical Preservation Commission also as a downtown revitalization committee also. And so I won't have to duplicate services. They'll be doing the same, they will be doing the same, you know, their, their extension of their duties is going to be to revitalize downtown at the same time that they're preserving the history, as far as.
And will they meet and, as a committee, and, and choose their chairman?
As far as, yes, the, the ordinance is already in place, the ordinance is intact, we're gonna follow the ordinance, whatever, I, I don't have any change to the ordinance. I read the ordinance, I, I like what it is. I think, I think it was a very effective, effective organization. The commission was very effective at the time. I just wanna give them the, the little spark for them to revitalize and, and come back to, to life again, so we can start doing those, those things.
Maybe at that workshop, and I know it's been a late meeting already, and I'm just, you know, but this is the time to, to bring things up like this. At our workshop, we could also bring the, the, I guess, their, their?
Their job descriptions, scope of work?
Rules and regulations for each board.
Yes, well, I, I think that, that at the end of this meeting, I'm gonna direct the city manager to make a copy of the current city ordinance that is in place.
But sometimes each one of them has their own, their own, their own rules, their own.
Right, so once they, they form, a lot of these committees come up with their own bylaws.
Right, their bylaws, that's the word I was looking for.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And maybe we can, we can have them ready by that date.
Okay.
Right, and I'm also in.
Can we vote on the, on the motion before I get Mr. Flores over there? You know, since we have a motion and a second on the floor. Yes, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay?
Thank you.
Can we have the appointees stand up and come over here for a photo and, and congratulations? Come over, stand up and?
We're discussing.
Is there any water in there?
I can't do them, I love to watch.
I'd like to, I'd love to water.
(inaudible) 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 Yes, let's do it because I've got some ancestral problems. (inaudible) 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 Okay, for the, for the record...
I have a headache. You don't have any...
For...
I'm going...
No. Okay, for the record, I just want to make sure that, that there is a change on the Mission Rail Bridge Action Board, on Advisory Action Board, and that, and that the Mission Historical Preservation is not an advisory committee. It is a commission. It is a Mission Historic Preservation Committee. It is a commission, and it is commissioned by the city ordinance. I just want to make sure that... Mr. Plata, you had a question before, or you, you would talk to me later.
Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss it later.
Going back now to the Agenda Item 2.0, which is a consent Agenda Item. As a consent Agenda Item, if there's anyone that, from the council that wants to pull any of the consent Agenda Items, we have a consent Agenda Item 2.1, 2.2, 2.3 with Resolution 1575, 2.4, 2.5.
I move for approval as presented, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve all the consent Agenda Items. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We go to approvals and authorization, 3.1, Mr. Oseville.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.1 is a preliminary plat approval of Caminos de Abraham subdivision, phase two. This is a fifty-eight point six, five acre tract of land situated in Nocales, Samora, Nicolas Samora survey. This is A-76, Portion forty-eight. This is in our rural ETJ, and the developers Everman Development Incorporated and the engineer South Texas Infrastructure Group. The subdivision is located at the northeast corner of Three Mile Road and Abram Road. There are a total of ninety-nine single-family lots that are being proposed. This is the second phase of this development, same engineer, same developer, and each lot will be on septic tanks. The nearest sewer line for the city of Mission is two point three miles away. The water CCN belongs to Awasad, and there is a, as far as drainage, there's a series of twenty-four and thirty-six inch drainage lines that will feed all the collected runoff water into a nearby Calichera that was purchased by the Idalo County Drainage District for the sole purpose of drainage. We're, this is a plat that's in the county ETJ, so the only thing that we're asking is that they comply with the street alignment policy, with the model subdivision rules, and with any comments from the county planning department with regards to the construction. Our P&amp;Z recommended approval. Staff is also recommending approval, as is our city manager. And the other respective departments are also recommending approval. Item 3.1 is now before you.
Are there any questions for staff? Is an applicant here? Case? No? Any questions? No?
I move to approve. I move to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Camino de Abram subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Good evening, Mayor, and all city council members. Mayor, come before you on item 3.3, seeking authorization to award bid for sodium chloride for north and south water treatment plants. The city of Mission has accepted an open two bid responses, that's a typo, instead of three, two bid responses for sodium chloride chemical. Staff recommends award to Evoqua Water Technologies, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities and orders will be placed on a mass-needed basis throughout the one-year term. The estimated cost is of two hundred thousand dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve item 3.3. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll open it for further discussion or by any council persons before voting. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.4, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir. Mayor, city council members, item 3.4 is the authorization to award bid for liquid ammonium sulfate for the north and south water treatment plants. The city of Mission has accepted an open four bid responses for liquid ammonium sulfate chemical. Staff recommends awarding to Chemtray Chemicals US LLC, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities and orders will be placed on a mass-needed basis throughout the one-year base term. The estimated cost is of sixty-five thousand dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second, and this I open it for discussion, any of the council persons. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.5, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir. Mayor, city council members, item 3.5 is the authorization to award bid for storm drain and channel, manholes and rainforest concrete pipe for streets and drainage department. The city of Mission has accepted an open two bid responses for storm drain and channel, manholes and rainforest concrete pipe for streets and drainage department. Staff recommends award to Core and Main LP, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications. Again, the recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities and orders will be placed, placed on a mass-needed basis throughout the one-year term. The estimated cost for this material will be of two hundred thousand dollars. And just to note, Mayor, city council members, Rio Valley Pipe did not submit bids for four of the items. So, staff and city manager recommend approval to award to Core and Main LP for this materials.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval.
I, motion for approval?
Second.
We have a second. Open it for discussion from any of the council persons. No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and get them out as soon as you buy them.
Yes, sir.
You know, put them in the field.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. 3.6, Chief Dominguez.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Item 3.6 is authorization to terminate contract between the city of Mission and Jorge El Cisneros. The Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to terminate the contract with Jorge El Cisneros, that's in effect until February twenty-eighth of twenty nineteen. The termination of the current contract is for the purpose of clarification of services and the addition of an indemnity clause on a new contract. A new contract with Mr. Jorge El Cisneros will be requested under his company name, Safetrack LLC DBA Safe Global Services. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to terminate the contract between the city of Mission and Jorge? Do we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.7, Chief?
Item 3.7 is authorization to enter into a contract between the city of Mission and Safetrack LLC DBA Safe Global Services to provide professional services. Safetrack LLC DBA Safe Global Services will be retained for the specific purpose of providing security measures along the Mission, Texas and Mexico border. Safetrack LLC DBA Safe Global Services will provide a number of security and intelligence services to the city of Mission as it relates to the proximity to the U.S.-Mexican border and the need to be aware of any potential threats to our international bridge, our border, and our community. The contract will be, will provide for indemnification as requested by city council. The total amount of the yearly contracts is twenty thousand four hundred dollars. That is actually forty-eight hundred dollars less than last year. I talked to Mr. Jel Cisneros, and he was able to bring the price down, and he is here with us today as well. Staff and city manager recommend approval for this contract.
Do you want to bring him up to the, to the mic so Mr. Cisneros can... I do want to let him know that I did two-year facility and I was very impressed.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. No, thank you, I'm all, and you all are welcome to come by the, our offices, we're open twenty-four seven. We're not too far from here, and I'd like to introduce my staff here. Carlos Ruiz, he's my operate, well, admin. Rick Rivera, who you may recognize was with the Texas Rangers for, for many years. He was a lieutenant, retired recently. And Eric Miss, who's, who's with me as well. Anyway, thank you so much for, for letting us, and it's an honor to serve your city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and I would love to, for the council to go visit your, your operations because they can be as impressed as I was.
Thank you.
Thank you for being patient and waiting.
Yeah, yeah. 3.8, authorization by Mr. Benson. Mr. Benson, you need authorization?
Yes, item 3.8 is for the authorization to accept and approve the replacement parts and labor for the water fountain at Mission Event Center. Staff is seeking authorization to accept and approve the system proposal to repair and replace components for the water fountain feature at the Mission Event Center. That has been provided to us by Delta Fountains, Architectural and Floating Fountains. Delta is original equipment manufacturer for this unit. The attached, you'll find the proposal for the components and the labor at a cost of twenty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars. Staff and recommendations, staff and city manager recommend approval for the system proposal from Delta Fountains, Architectural and Floating Fountains.
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve 3.8 and further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
3.9, Ms. Derma?
Mayor and council, 3.9 is authorization to purchase beer, wine, and liquor for the resale at the Mission Event Center. And so we've got several vendors that provide these services or these products that are needed for resale, which include Glazier's Beer and Beverage, LNF Distributors, Holiday Wine and Liquor, and Philman's Market Center. The purchases, the purchases are only made on an as-needed basis and should not exceed fifty-five thousand dollars for the year. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I...
I move to approve.
We have a motion and second.
Second.
And this, I'll open it for further discussion. And no, no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.10, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor and council, this is authorization to solicit proposals for an audit on city of Mission finances, fixed assets, vehicles, equipment, and general inventory. This audit is basically going to get a more detailed account on what the city's current inventory is, and so we're requesting approval to solicit proposals.
Do I...
Move for approval.
Do I have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and this I open it for discussion. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
3.11, Ms. Vela?
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Item 3.11 is authorization to retract donation of vehicles to sister cities and sell via online auctions. There's a list of nine vehicles that were previously donated to sister cities in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, and because of a difficulty of transferring title over, we're asking to take those vehicles back and sell them via online auction.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 3.11, and this I ask for further discussion. No other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.12, budget amendment, hotel, motel...
Item 3.12 is a budget amendment in the hotel motel fund of twenty-eight thousand dollars. This is for the replacement of the parts and labor for the water fountain at the Mission Event Center by the original equipment manufacturer recently presented.
Do I hear a motion to approve 3.12?
I'll move.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Vela.
Thank you.
3.13, Mr. Pettis?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Item 3.13, staff is, is asking for authorization or seeking to allow the mayor and city manager to notify Texas Water Development Board of intent to proceed the, the funding of the Northwest EDA project. The Water Development Board has reviewed and ranked the city of Mission application as number five that were received for EDA funding. Their preliminary review of the city's application indicates that the city is eligible and in line to receive two million five hundred and fifty-two thousand in EDA grant funds and two million two hundred and fifty-two thousand in EDA loan funds. The Water Development Board is requesting for the city to advise them if the city is interested in continuing to pursue this funding. The Water Development Board will present all EDA-funded projects to the board for their consideration on December the thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Staff, at this time, are recommending direction from council.
On my recommendation, Mayor, that's, that's the same recommendation as well as staff, it's to seek direction from the council. I'm going to pass out just the...
Yes, 3.13, item, I can tell you that from the mayor's, I am recommending that we do authorize, to allow the mayor and city manager to notify them, the Texas Water Development Board, for the intent.
And a little bit of history on the, I mean, the, just a summary of the, the handout. Total is nine hundred and eight lots, and occupied lots would be eight hundred and twenty-five that are currently occupied. And so it's just a summary of revenue projections that could, assuming that all eight hundred And so, it's just a summary of revenue projections that could, assuming that all 825 occupied lots are connected to our sewer.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion, and do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this I open it for discussion. Ms. Garza.
Do I need to abstain? Abstain? Because I have property in this area.
Is your, is your property within the EDAP project area?
Isn't it?
It's in the annexed, proposed area.
It is in the EDAP area.
ETJ.
Well, I was not aware.
I'm not aware.
I don't think you are, nor you. You're in the annex, the proposed annex, but not the EDAP.
It is.
The, you want to, Fred, you want to explain the boundaries?
You want to clarify the location, the surrounding?
It's a, it's four mile line.
Just to kind of expedite things, I'd rather abstain, if you don't mind, Mayor. Please.
Well, now, the other question is, is my property in the EDAP also?
You want to explain the boundary? It's four mile and?
As I wasn't in the...
Up to seven mile between Benson Palm on the west and La Homa on the east.
Right.
La Homa on the east and Benson Palm on the west, that my property is out. My property is not a part of the EDAP.
That's one EDAP project. And then, the second area is on Holland and four mile line. On the southwest corner.
And I don't have property over there either. Do you have property, Ms. Garza? Do you have property in those?
I have property on, between La Homa and Benson Palm.
So, you officially exempt?
I abstain.
You abstain?
I abstain.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and recognition of an abstainment.
Thank you.
Now, 3.14, Mr. Chief Dominguez, approval of professional services?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, approval of professional services agreement with Hollis Rutledge and Associates. Consulting is to provide services regarding state and federal relations relating to the city of Mission and economic development activities, including but not limited to researching, developing, writing, obtaining, and administering grants on behalf of the city of Mission Police and Fire Departments. The term of the agreement is from October 1st of 2018 through September 30th of 2019. In meeting with Mr. Hollis Rutledge, an agreement was reached at $4,500 a month. The original was $4,000. We agreed at $4,500. That would be $54,000 for the year, and that's $6,000 less than last year's contract.
So, it's $4,500?
I'm sorry?
$4,500.
Yes, sir. $54,000 is for the entire year, so it's $6,000 less than last year's contract, and it's $4,500 a month.
And this is since October 1st to the 30th?
This is $4,000 a month.
Yeah, but it's for $4,500.
Yes, and so, that's a correction that the chief is making, so, so it is $4,500 that was negotiated with Hollis and Associates for the service. The previous year, it was $5,000, so that's the savings that the chief is talking about, $6,000 savings a year.
Any questions?
So, we're running behind, chief, since October 1st to the?
No, sir. I guarantee you, we're never behind, sir. When it comes to federal and state grants, no, sir. You're on top of it. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this I open it for discussion from any of the council persons. Any council person wants to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five vote. 3.15, chief?
Yes, Mayor, City Council. 3.15 is authorization to award bid for security guard services. The city of Mission accepted nine bids for security guard services. Staff recommends to award bid to MLG Protection Services, who submitted fair and reasonable pricing and who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting the scope of services. Staff and said city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve, based on the staff and city manager recommendation.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this I open it for discussion. Councilman Martinez? No discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.16, Chief Dominguez.
Mayor, City Council, item 3.16 is authorization to negotiate and enter into contract with, for prosecution services with Carlos Ortega. Carlos Ortega has provided prosecution services since 2014. This contract will clarify the scope of work and other contractual terms and extend the term of the contract until October 1st of 2019. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I apologize for interrupting. On this particular item, there were some contractual provisions that were substantially modified in this contract that do impact certain matters within the city. I would ask that if the council does have some legal questions regarding the impact of those contractual terms, that we go into executive session pursuant to consultation with attorney.
Based on your recommendation, legal, I'll open it for any of the council person. Do you have any, any questions on the contract? On the contract?
I would mention anything from you?
I haven't, I haven't seen the contract.
So, let's, let's ask for legal advice, and that's going to executive session pursuant to 551.001, and I would entertain a motion for that.
I'll move to go into executive session.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Will we be discussing the rest of the items?
Yes, we're going to come back and discuss the rest of the items, you know?
No, no.
No, we have three more items in executive session, Mayor.
Okay. Then, well, we already passed the motion to go into executive session, so we only have one item left and an unfinished business for the routine. Is it possible, legal, to take care of the items before we go to executive session?
Yes, Mayor. You just need to withdraw the second and the, and the motion.
Do we have a, a second?
I withdraw mine.
And, and you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw the motion.
Okay. Based on the withdrawal, then I'll call for unfinished business for 4.0, under 4.1, interlocal agreement between the city of Mission. The first thing that I have to entertain is a, is a motion to get it out of the table, because it's a table item from 9/24/18.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to remove from the table, and there's, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion has been, agenda has been removed from the table. Now, we can entertain agenda item 4.1, and this I open it for Chief Dominguez. Give us a...
Yes, Mayor. Item 4.1 is an interlocal agreement between the city of Mission and the city of Peñitas. The interlocus for the temporary housing and detention of prisoners awaiting arraignment. The Mission Police Department agrees to make use of their holding cells for prisoners of the Peñitas Police Department subject to the availability of space based on the facility's capacity. The temporary housing of prisoner will be at a cost of $54 per prisoner per day. The cost includes detention, transportation, and meal costs. The term of the agreement is for one year, commencing on October 1st, 2018, and ending at midnight on September 30th, 2019. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this I open it for further discussion.
I just have a question. This, the $50 per diem includes transportation?
On the, on the contract, as specified, ma'am, the transportation will be conducted by the city of Peñitas as far as the arrest, company Peñitas, from their city to the city of Mission facility. The only time we will provide transportation and is really in case of an emergency, and that will be through an ambulance, but we would send an officer to Mission Hospital, and they would have 30 minutes to respond from their city to Mission Hospital to take care of the patient.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that and be sure that we weren't responsible to take them to county jail.
No.
No, so they're going to be arraigning back at their city, and from there, taking them straight to the county jail, correct, chief?
Yes, they, they will pick them up at our facility, take them back to Peñitas to be arraigned before their municipal court judge, and then transport it to the county jail.
How are they doing it right now? How are they doing it right now?
Right now, they have an emergency agreement with us, with the city of Mission, as of October the 1st.
Right, so they used to have a, an agreement with the city of Palmview, and there was a disagreement with, with that, and so, they tapped into our city to see we could provide some service. We did it as an emergency, maybe for both businesses. We tabled about two weeks, and so now, we were looking at an interlocal agreement.
Can I call for a question? We haven't voted yet, have we?
No, I'm waiting for the, for, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.0, routine matters. 5.1, city managers comment?
No, Mayor, just really to congratulate the staff, the police department, the fire department parks for, I think we had a great event over at the National Night Out this past Thursday. Very well attended. Beautiful park that was put together by not only the contractor, but also the staff that participated in the demolition and the, and actually doing the parking lot and some of the lighting and so, and so forth, so just to congratulate them on that, on those events.
Any, any other thing?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. 5.2, mayor's comment. I just wanted to let everybody know that, that Mission is moving forward, and we're doing very, very well. And this I'll call 5.3 at city council. We'll start with Mr. Councilman Martinez.
I have nothing other than the fact that the Astros won today, Mayor, and, yeah, that's good.
I don't have any additional comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Garza?
I'm honored to let you all know that, remember last meeting, little Kelsey Villalobos came forward and said she was running, and she won her election, so she's place one in Mustangville, and the mayor's race is actually in a runoff. So, that's going to be exciting. And so, I would also like to say, due to the current events, I'm going to be speaking. For a lot of us here, we may never decide on one candidate or, or agree 100% on who we choose, but we need to put politics aside. We all are, all of us here are Missionites, and we deserve better than what was, what is going on. I feel very proud to be born and raised here in Mission among all of you here tonight. We need together to rise up. We should stand firm and tall and go against all negativity, bullying, continue belittling all these fake profiles that are on Facebook. We need to stand together as a community and let the process take place, and pray, pray every day for our city of Mission. Thank you.
I'm going to call 5.2, mayor's comment, again, just to let the public know that starting tomorrow, that we are heading to the, to the Texas Municipal League in Fort Worth for training and, and continuing educational units for, for the council. It's my understanding, all council members and, and myself will be attending there, so if you need to do a post to let the public know that we're going to be over there, even though we are not going to be conducting business, we are going to be in training session, but it's in the best interest of our city to go ahead and, and do a post, so we can let the public know, and right now, we're live, and I want to let the public know that we are, and the purpose of us going to Texas Municipal League is just to get better and improve our city with most current training that's, that's out there. And Mr. Garza, our city manager's going to accompany us also, just FYI. We're going to leave Randy Perez in charge of the city, so just for FYI.
That's correct, sir. So, I sent out a memo this, this afternoon, leaving both deputy city managers in charge of their respective departments, both of them, Mr. Perez and Ms. Saad Alerma.
No, thank you.
I'll be staying behind it, and if anybody needs some help or anything, I'll be in town.
You're not going?
I will not be attending.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I was informed differently, but, but that's okay, you know? Okay, now I'll entertain the executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.001. Do I hear a motion?
I move to go into executive session.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session, and this, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.